Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holly Township Parks and Recreation Meeting. This is a regular meeting, and today's date is June 11th, 2025. Madam Secretary, would you please call? Wait, wait, I called this meeting to order, I apologize. Can we just do the Pledge of Allegiance next, please? Thank you. Sorry, my mind is... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, civil, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Next is roll call. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Hutchins.
Here.
Commissioner Carl.
Here.
Commissioner De Sessa.
Here.
And Earl, here.
So we have a quorum?
We have a quorum, yes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time. Next item is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 14th, 2025?
I make that motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 14th, 2025.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wright, move the motion. Is there a support?
I support.
Supported by Commissioner Carl. Roll call vote, please. Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Next is for B, and this is a motion to approve the minutes. This is from the special meeting, and this is dated May the 28th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve these minutes, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 28th, 2025.
Motion made by Commissioner Wright. Is there a second or support?
I will second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Earl. All those in favor, roll call, please. Let me do roll call.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and appreciate the time that the secretary has done for these minutes. So, thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have approval of the agenda or changes to the agenda. I hear a motion to either approve or amend this agenda as submitted.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the agenda. We need to add the schedule for next year's meeting, next fiscal year's meeting schedule.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, but we don't have a listing of what those meetings are. Do we, is it on here?
I have one, but I didn't type it up.
Okay.
I did not see any conflicts as far as holidays or anything.
Okay.
I have July 9th.
Okay, before you go further, is there a support for this item?
I'd support.
Okay, supported by Commissioner Carl. So is there any discussion on this before we vote? So, Manager, you were mentioning the dates.
Yep, July 9th, August 13th.
Point, point.
Yes, sir.
This has to be added to D on new business review for us.
Okay.
Since that's part of the agenda here, and is item D.
Item D?
Yeah.
Like in David, and this is...
For meeting, meetings.
Oh, I see. Last item on the agenda.
And at that time, we can discuss the dates.
Okay, so it was added on. Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll hold off on the meeting dates until then. All right, so the meeting has been amended. We, and we voted on the item that needs to be done. So do I have a vote now to approve the amended agenda?
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Is there a support?
Support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Carl? Roll call, please.
Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next is item number six, public comment. This is where members of the public can address the commission once the person is, once the chairperson, once recognized by the chairperson for items listed on the agenda only. Let me go back on that, because it is not very clear. I apologize. So members of the public can address the commission once recognized by the chairperson for items listed on the agenda only. Comments are limited to four minutes. The commission may extend this time by up to an additional four minutes by majority vote. Prior to addressing the commission, members of the public are asked to state their name and address for the record. I see no members of the public present. Having seen none, we will move on with the item. If, before we move on this item, and this is a minor issue. I know that in the past, we always ask for individuals to provide their address. I would like for us to consider not asking for the address and for the individual to simply state if they are a village resident or a township resident or other, if they're from another community, just simply to do that. Now, we're not going to vote on it tonight. We're gonna, I'm gonna ask the manager to please put that item on for next time so that we can consider it. But it's just something that, again, it's for security, for privacy purposes. I, many cities do this where we don't ask for your exact address. It goes out into the, into the air, and it is subject to security and scrutiny. So anyway, it's just, it's just for discussion for right now. Thank you, thank you, Commission. All right, moving on to old business. A, discuss and vote on bids for road and driveway improvements. This is from the barn to the nature center. Madam Manager, can you review this item for us, please?
We got three bids, and... They came in a little easier than the previous ones. They seem to include the actual scope of the work and the materials that are listed. Do you want me to specifically?
Yeah, just identify who presented them and their cost, please.
Greg Prose Excavating LLC came in at $12,840. However, he also listed that if we chose an option to upgrade to 21 AA limestone, there would be an additional fee of $1,800, and he felt that this was a much better choice. On the second bid, the Big Green, that bid came in at $14,600, and Bruce Low Excavating came in at $20,000.
Yes, I do like these bids a lot better. They're, they're very specific in terms of the items and how much they're charging and what they're doing.
I would like to say that Commissioner Hutchins and Commissioner Carl met with me, and we drafted a letter that was more detailed and asked them specifically to include more detail as well.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
One point of interest on our bids. We were supposed to be, this is our third bid out, and we were very pointed on what we were looking for. And we have one bid here that's, there's all supposed to be apples to apples. We have one bid in here, proposal is apples with a pineapple.
Which one is that? The... Commissioner Hutchins, which, 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 which contract? Which is the pineapple?
If you read through your proposals, Mr. Prose's proposal, he's talking about upgrading the entrance road from Holly Road to the barn.
From the nature center to East Holly Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's an apple with a pineapple. You know, we, we're going out for bids, and we, we made a few mistakes, so we're recorrecting them. And anybody that puts in a bid understands what we made clear, what we were looking for, apples to apples. And that's all I have to say about the proposals.
Yeah, there is an item in here that we didn't request.
Which, which one is it? Number six. Grayden Crown Road.
The first part of it is correct. Grayden Crown the Road from the nature center to the barn area. It's the next part that was done, the nature center to East Holly Road was not asked for, because that was going to be in the Phase Two portion for next year.
It's a plug.
And we also told them we wanted 21A clay gravel mix, which there was an addition to this proposal stating crushed limestone. So we, we tried to make this as simple and straightforward as possible for the third time.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hutchins, what did we ask, the 21A or 23A?
We did not ask for a specific, we said clay gravel mix.
Which is, depends on what size gravel mixture you get. The difference between the two is one's got decent, regular sized stones and smaller stones to interlock, and the other one has more of a grade stone in it, but it's still, it's with clay mix to give you a base. Usually, you don't put limestone on unless you've got a good base.
Okay.
You use gravel. And we've shown that up by the pole barn. That driveway that goes up the pole barn door was, was put in, and we compacted that. It's been there since the pole barn's been built. No washout, no muddy, it never gets muddy. We don't sink our trucks and stuff in it, so.
The reason I, the reason I ask is because the Big Green quote has 21A. Brett Prose, I believe, is 23A with the option to go to 21A, and Bruce Low is specifically 23.
23, we got, we got three different.
Right.
Toppings.
And that's the only difference between the number on the stone and it's all clay mix, but one has two or three sizes of stones which interlock, and one is more of a solid grade stone. You know, when they go through rocks, they go through tumblers, and it grades out the size of what you're asking for. Because some of this gravel without the clay is used for a good base road, or whether it needs base and they just don't put the clay in, they just sink all the gravel or limestone.
Thank you.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we've got apples and pineapples, but don't we have three pineapples? We've got three different gravel top.
Were we specific on the gravel?
We did not say it's specific on the gravel, because Bruce Low explained to us when we first met with him that they discontinued the 23A, but he liked it so well that he arranged to have a large portion of it delivered to his yard. And so he just prefers using that type, and so that's why he put the 23A in here. But I'm not sure that the other people would have been able to obtain 23A even if they tried. I think now they're not using that type.
Okay. But they both have, the other two appear to have the 21 AA limestone. But since we weren't specific, I mean, I guess it's up to the, to, to the contractor.
Would you like me to get the letter?
What's, did Bruce Low initially state he had a pile of the clay gravel stockpile?
The 23A.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that is clay gravel? Would, does have 23A as clay?
Clay mix, yes.
That's what I was.
Yep.
Well, I wish, been a little bit, well, I, I guess the, the contractor can tell us what he thinks would be the best for us to use. So I don't, I don't have too much of an issue with that. But again, I guess I'm going to, to go to listen to some of the direction or advice and experience of some of our members here as to which gravel would be, would be more effective than the, than either, either these, either the limestone or the the 23A, for lack of a better word here. So the 21 AA, which is the crushed limestone material, and the other one was the 21 AA, correct?
23.
20, 23A.
We have two 21As and one 23.
Gotcha, okay. So any of those will do? And I, any other further discussion, any other questions that we have? Is there, from the, from the individuals who put this together, is that a major issue? All due respect, either one of these materials will work, correct? Mr. Hutchins? Either one of these materials will work and do a good job?
Anything will work.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to point out, even though Greg Prose indicated from Grange, or Grange? East Holly Road to the, that is kind of a bonus in this proposal. I mean, we get a professional grader, you know?
So he says that he will furnish and install two tons of clay gravel mix and grade the entire road from the nature center to East Holly Road with, with a grader, even though that's not anything that we asked for. And, and he recommends, he recommends that we upgrade to 21 AA limestone. And with that, his bid goes up to a total of $14,640 if we were to do that. Of course, this is not what we asked for in the proposal. Again, this is up, up to us here, but I would recommend that we stay with the proposal, you know, just to make sure that everybody understands what we asked for. And while we appreciate this, we still need, any other to keep the apples to apples, I think?
I disagree.
Also?
I think this is, all three are suitable. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, all right, then.
It's, I have a technicality that could even be a typo, but the fact that he's going to do something from Grange Hall, this way would take out some, some potholes.
For a while.
Something that is needed. Phase Two is going to resolve that, too. But to me, it's, you know, it's in the range, it's, it's worth it, we would benefit.
Okay, I, I hear you, and I understand. You, you know my concern, my comment, I, I think that we should stay the same, but it's okay, it's okay. It, it's not going to, if that's what the Commissioners decide.
If, to me, if the proposal has the outlines that we had, you know, asked for, and in addition, has these, I mean, as long as it has the basics that we can compare to the three, it feels like it still should be considered.
Okay. Any other, any comments about that, any questions, Commissioners on the side? Commissioner Hutchins, any, any concerns about doing that? As long as they all responded to what we asked for, and if they had anything in addition that would be beneficial to this project, do you have a concern with that?
Yes and no.
Okay, you're, you're, can you elaborate a little further on that? What is your concern and?
We've spent a lot, lot of time on this.
Okay, any, any other comments? Is there a motion? Is there someone that anyone would like to recommend? So looking at these proposals, as, as Commissioner Carl said, they do respond to our requests, all three of them. Is that correct?
Correct. I think Commissioner Earl made a very good point.
Yes.
It covers the basic that we were trying to achieve.
Correct. And one adds additional, additional work that we did not request. And, and in this case, well, there's, there's other things that he adds, like the spoils and the berms and the ditches to be spread on the road to brush piles.
That, that was included.
That was included, okay, all right.
And, yeah, in the, our third proposal was also the swale this side and the topping of the new parking lot up here, detailed in our little map.
I do appreciate the work that each of, each of these individuals did, and I think we, I think we could choose one of them and still be within. Now, having said that, is there a motion from the Commission, a recommendation or?
One comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm not seeing Big Green include the parking lot. Am I missing that? Is there any reference in his three paragraphs to our map and our directional request for proposal?
I don't, I don't see it either.
So I think that's a question.
Okay, they're not here to answer.
Yeah, unclear what, again, cry.
Okay, everyone has the right to submit their proposal, and they replied as they saw bid. A few were, gave us more details than the others, and again, this is not a mega project. We're going to ask for a lot, and the, the contractors are not here. Now, I don't want to hold this up anymore.
No.
So...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If I can. I, with the completeness of Greg Prose Excavating at the cost roughly $40 more than Big Green, which has some ambiguity, I would propose that we endorse Greg Prose Excavating for this project.
At a cost of $14,640?
Correct.
Okay, and that is within our budget. Madam Manager, is that correct?
The only thing I would correct is that with Greg Prose, you have that additional cost of the $1,800.
That is included in the $14,640.
Yes.
But that's what I mean, we're...
If we were not to include the, the upgrade, the stone, he is, his bid would be the lowest. He would be $12,840. But I guess we agree, or most of us agree, that we should upgrade it to limestone. Is that correct? The majority of us here? Okay, is there a support for this motion?
I'll support.
Okay. So motion made by Commissioner Carl, supported by Commissioner Wright. Roll call. Hutchins?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
De Sessa? I know this one is hard. I will vote no. Earl?
Is there any room for discussion, or we just?
We're, we're, we have to take a vote. The only reason I voted no was my concern was it's not apples to apples. That's, that's my concern, but he added additional things. And even, but the things that he added that were addition, it, it's not going to hurt. But it, so either way, if you wish to, to support this, then, then go ahead. You have that very right.
Yeah.
You have the right to disagree.
I, I say yes.
Okay, very good, okay, all right. So...
That is motion passed.
Motion passed. Thank you, Madam Secretary, that was a three to two. And yeah, we will, we will disagree and, and agree, and that is how we do, but the majority, majority rules. So that is the decision the Commission made, okay? All right, moving right along. Okay, next item is the beach opening and signage. Yay! The beach is going to open, I'm so excited. Okay, so we're just, we're going to, in this case, we're, we're just going to discuss or we're going to vote on this? I don't, I don't see much explanation on the, on the agenda item itself. It's just discussion, or do we need to vote?
Well, um...
Madam Manager.
Actually, Commissioner Carl had requested that the signage be on there and the beach opening. And I think that Friday, the 13th, is the day after school gets out. And I did talk to Amy Childers, and she said that when, the two years that she was director here, that they opened on the Saturday. And so I had thought that we would open on the Saturday. The other thing I would like to address regarding signage is that when we met at the beach with our loss and liability representative from the insurance, that particular day, we had PFAS rolling into the beach due to wind. And he had pointed out that having a sign there, point, you know, saying that if there is foam present, that possibly, don't touch the foam, something to that effect. I have been, I had reached out to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services because they have started a educational campaign regarding foam. And so I was going to get literature from them regarding that. But I also belong to two state level PFAS groups, and I was reaching out to some of those members as to signage that they may have seen in their community as far as that, so. And then also, I think somebody, and I'm not sure who it was, when we were out there, that possibly, if the foam gets to be more of an issue, that we might... that we might install like an outside shower type thing by the bathroom so that people could rinse off if they choose to. So, that might be something. But, you know, um, working at the beach last year, um, there were only like two days that I remember, and I worked very part-time, so, you know, I was not there all the time. Um, where the wind was driving the foam into the beach. Uh, more of what I observed was the, uh, jet skis and pontoons stirring up the water and then the foam would appear. And once those boats had disappeared, then the foam would dissipate within fifteen to twenty minutes. Um, the, the foam getting on your skin is not as much of an issue as the foam being ingested. And that directs more to children, uh, who, you know, like to play with the foam and things like that. And, uh, so that is more of the concern of the health department, that, uh, keeping children and that away from the phone.
Okay.
And so that's why, you know, I think it's important that we post somewhere, um, that they should avoid the foam, just even through the education of the parents, because most people don't even know what PFAS is. And, you know, the foam, they wouldn't recognize as being any kind of danger for this part.
Okay.
But the thing is with PFAS, and I'm saying this as much for the public, it travels by air. It travels by, um, it's in the soil and in the water. So, you know, even if you were swimming and you had your mouth open, you're still getting PFAS in your mouth. And the fact is, is that Bush Lake does test for PFAS in the water. And it does test for PFAS in the fish. And our fish, um, qualify for both mercury and PFOS uh, for the Eat Safe Fish Guide. And I will say that the Eat Safe Fish Guide was just updated in the last month. And we went from a small number of, uh, lakes to over seven hundred and forty, I think. Uh, that now are restricted as far as number of fish to eat. So, anybody out there, sure you check your lakes before you eat the fish.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner?
Um, do you know what the acceptable, uh, PFAS levels are relative to water and where does Bush Lake rank in there?
It's not, um, for the Eat Safe Fish Guide, it's not the level of the water. It's the level that's in the fish. They actually catch the fish and they test the fish. And, um, what they do is they determine how many fish per month or per week or that type of a thing. I don't have the literature right here with me, I don't think.
My question pertained to like swimmers.
Yeah.
Since we're in that business, um, do we have any statistics that, that measure the amount of PFAS? And when you talk about the foam, if people were to ingest, what, at what point might they have a reaction? What should we?
Do the test results of the level of PFAS tested in Bush Lake. And it was, it was low. Um, it, you know, even the testing that our own group has done, um, we have low levels regardless, but it's widespread. It, it's throughout.
Okay.
It's, you know.
So safe to say our concern should be with the fall.
Yes.
If there's foam present, we should be reacting to that.
Stay away from foam.
Correct. And, and I think that on those days, just like when we had, um, the cleanup, the beach cleanup with ASP. And I think most of the commissioners saw that that foam not only was coming into the beach, but it was rolling across the grass and in big clumps, um, that those type of days, I, I would suggest we close the beach entirely. I, I just don't think there's any point to, you know, because it does travel in the air as well. And when you have the wind that's driving it, you're getting that blowing it onto people and that, so. But that's just my.
Okay, so, yes, Commissioner?
When talking on the foam at the beach, when we were down there, we hit a pretty good, uh, ten to twenty mile an hour, maybe gusting to thirty northeast wind, which blows all of Bush Lake into our beach and Lakeside Park. And I seen foam out there, the tidal foam along the shore, three to four feet deep, going out and at least that high. And a lot of kids think that foam is a lot of fun, because they go to parks and stuff, they have a foam machine. And they take the foam, they put it on, and I kids will be kids, you know, everybody eats dirt once in a while, but I would go to suggesting on a bad windy foam day is don't, uh, expose the public to a uh, the carcinogen.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so it looks like we're all in, uh, in support of having some type of signage. The thing that I would add to that, because staff is not always present, maybe we could have some material that we can place on, uh, on a window or plexiglass or something that people can, can read. Or, uh, we can, we can, you know, have some pamphlets or anything like that when staff is there.
We have a display cabinet that I think that was on the side of the building, is that correctly?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had two of them.
Yeah, I think, I think having that and, you know, we can include some of that information in there. Um, and along with, you know, um, any of our planned activities that are coming up, I think that would be good, but.
Beach bulletin board.
What's that?
Our, that's our beach bulletin board, up, upcoming events.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I would recommend that we, we place something there as well, so that people can understand. Because when you, if we put a sign out there and says, you know, uh, stay away from, from, uh, from foam, they're gonna wonder why.
Educate the people.
Well, I did have a conversation with a man named Randy, um, who is with, um, Eagle uh, Energy Great Lakes and, uh, Environment. And, um, he had told me that, um, you know, we shouldn't call it PFAS foam. He says, because it's not tested. And I said, well, how many things do you think create that type of, you know, issue where it's blowing across the grass and everything else? And he agreed. He says, no matter what it is, it's toxic more than likely. And so that's why the state on any level is saying, just don't touch the foam, so.
Okay. Do they give a recommendation as to what the sign should say? Just?
Um, no, they didn't. And, uh, so, you know, that's why I was reaching out to some of the other people that I know that, you know, have communities, uh, to see what they have as far as.
Please don't touch the foam, or, you know, do not play with foam, please see. Oh, it, it's, it's only a sign, it can't have a lot of information on it, just please stay away from foam probably would be a good way.
Has a bottom caption, put on, please see bulletin board for, for more, more information.
That's a great idea.
Nice big letters, see?
Yeah. Thank you. Yep, that's a great idea.
Commissioner?
I think the, um, another point that we could consider is, uh, putting some, um, PSAs on the Facebook page.
Definitely.
Get the word out and maybe get the, uh, public more information regarding PFAS.
That would be excellent.
Um, that kind of thing.
I, I love that idea. Excellent, excellent.
And I, I would say the PFAS has been in that lake, because I've lived down and over there for years. And I would say that goes back at least thirty, thirty-five years, there was foam on the lake. It used to be just as bad then too. So it's been around for a long time.
And that, you know, this isn't the meeting for it, but, you know, then, then you have to start wondering where the source was. Because the fact is, is that, you know, until Silverstone and, you know, all the other type of pans and everything else, you know, it, it wasn't widely used even though it was created in the forties and fifties, I think, but, um.
Well, during World, late World War II, you used to see when they had a crash on an aircraft, aircraft carrier, to put out a gasoline fire on those airplanes. They use foam in the late part of the war. And they just cover their whole ship with foam on the deck, because the deck was wood.
Well, it's, I will agree that, you know, having participated for going on three and a half years now, I think with the state level PFAS groups, we're very fortunate that our PFAS levels are low. Because you have places like, uh, surrounding Wolverine worldwide on the west side of the state that contaminated twenty-five miles of communities over there with their drinking water. Um, and Ascot, which was like, uh, one of the, it was the first, I think, um, military base that was, uh, actually, um, where the community rose up and demanded that the military actually do something. Yeah.
I used to fish, uh, back when I was in my twenties on Lake Michigan. I started my skiing and worked my way all the way up to Frankfurt, you know, on a good windy day, Lake Michigan had PFAS.
Oh.
You had to walk, they called it the surf foam.
Yeah.
That's what we called it. And it was, we didn't know what it was, we just thought it was an agitation of the lake, by the way. So it's been around for a damn long time.
Yeah. If anybody, uh, would like more information, um, I would recommend going on the M Part website, which is the Michigan PFAS Action Response Team. And, um, if you go on that website, go under, I think it's, uh, Community Education maybe. Um, but there are, uh, resources there. And our Citizen Advisory Work Group that I belong to, we created a, um, PFAS one O one document. And it has lots of links in there that, uh, will take you to other resources as well. And, uh, learn about specific things like, you know, what products have PFAS in them, which is an amazing amount of products that, uh.
And we could, we could do a PSA of some sort later on, so you, you brought some good points, but moving right along?
Yeah.
Let's move right along.
Are we talking about signage then near the water's edge?
Uh.
Talks about?
Yes, I, that's what I assume. We would have to place it.
To the bulletin board?
Yes. And, uh, we would have to make sure that it's, it's close to the, to the beach, so that people can see that. And, or to the edge of the water, as you say, and, uh.
My next question, should we allocate some money towards that?
Well, it's not on the agenda, okay? This is why I ask you all.
Signing.
It says, it says beach opening and signage. When we, I'm going to, I'm gonna slow down, because I know that, that we, we've had a difference since how we, we write agenda items. But I will ask staff, please, tell us what it is that you want us to consider. Don't just put beach sign. And, uh, so in, in the future, let's do that, please, because that is, that is how an agenda item is, is to be written.
Well, it helps us do our homework, if we have some description of what we're looking at.
Exactly.
I, I, are we still talking about signage?
Yes, we, well, we were talking about the agenda items, but we'll, we'll go, we'll go back on that again. So in the future, I ask staff to please be a little bit more specific in terms of what is it that you want us to do? And, and not just put beach opening and signage.
I, well, just one more comment for signage. On our new sign, we forgot one of the most important things at a beach.
Yes.
Do nots. And that's no glass. Every beach around has a big sign, no glass, because for the reason is, people walk around in their bare feet. That no glass has been, ever since they opened the beach, no glass. It's worse than no alcohol, because that's what the guards look for. Not the guards, the employees at the beaches, open up your thing, show me you got any glass. You have to take your glass out. That's why nobody's ever been cut by glass or rusty nails or anything at the beach. The only, like, only cuts they ever got was from razorback clams that live in the lake water. That's the only cuts we've ever had for first aid, because we used to document that. So if somebody come back and say, oh, yeah, and our guards, our lifeguards would say, okay, where'd, where'd you get that cut? Oh, out there on that side of the beach, you know, out in the water, silver's clench. But that is the most, one of the most biggest important things that was on that sign is no glass. Every public beach, I don't care where it is in Michigan, no glass.
No, yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah.
So, so we're go, we're asking the commission to consider to, to do signage. Is this to, uh, expand on the current signage that we have, the sign that we have and add? Add the, uh, the glass? I'm surprised it's not there. It, it is common. Normal, or have we already, have we already done this? Uh-oh.
Sign is out?
Uh-oh.
Something can be added below it.
Okay.
I think we're talking about more signage down by the water.
Okay. Alright, so for now, let's go ahead and, at least my recommendation. And hopefully someone will make a motion that we add additional signage. Uh, one sign would be for, uh, caution, uh, for people to stay away from the, uh, the foam. And then, uh, another sign, uh, to place, I guess, on, on the big sign that says no glass. Is that okay? Do I hear a motion for that, please?
Well, also on that sign, we used to have, you had to be a certain age to be dropped out there, because the place became a babysitting service.
Oh.
There is a sign on the fence.
That children under a certain age cannot be dropped off?
It, I can't tell you exactly, but it references, you know, drop your children off. It's.
Madam Manager, are you aware of this sign? Anything you can remember? I don't remember a sign, seen a sign on, I've been to the beach.
I think there is something about it, but I also can't remember. It's not very big.
It's, it's like the other ones, they're, they're all this big and about that wide.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I know I'm, signs, we would, you know, we could put signs everywhere. And I would like to address all the concerns that we have. These are, these are important items. So, can we, uh, with the maker, whoever's gonna pass this or make this motion, ask to take a look at that issue regarding, uh, the drop, dropping off of children? Uh, that it's not permitted, as we've done in the past. Make sure that is there, if a sign's not there.
So like unsupervised minors, is that what we're looking for?
I think so, yes, yes, yes.
Something to that.
So unsupervised minors, and that would be the age of, and we list the age, may not be, uh, here without proper, uh.
Children must be accompanied by an adult.
That's pretty close to what it says, Madam.
Yeah. And like I say, the reason for that was, we used to open the beach at noon. It was swim the classes from ten to ele, to twelve. And at high noon, you didn't need a clock. Cars would line up, they dump off their kids and take off. We had little kids, I mean toddlers, with their older brother or sister who was five or six years old.
Oh my goodness.
So who was watching who? Big liability.
Yes.
Yep. Ouch.
Okay, well, let's please, uh, add those to the sign, if, if the sign is approved. The, the only concern I have is costs. This is not something, oh, no, it would be part of our budget. We do have some, some funds available. Let me look at the budget here. I believe the manager added the budget, so we can see.
It's this.
Okay, how much do these type of signs usually cost? Does anyone know? About a couple hundred dollars or? Am I imagining? It's been a while since I bought a sign.
Oh, it depends on who you go to. We used to have a, a, a more economical source for signage, like for this golf and stuff out here.
Well, I, I don't know as far as the, um, metal signs. Those are mainly what's on the fence, right? The metal, the coated metal signs. I don't know, I have no clue how much those run.
The only thing I don't like about signs on the fences is, uh, some people come along and call what they tag them. You know, they tagged quite a few rare signs before, so. That's why we put them on the inside, so they have to go over the top of the fence. So, yeah, they take quite a few rare signs in our dumpster too.
So.
So where would this?
Are you recommending then that we don't put signage on the fence? That we do, like Commissioner Carl was just saying, having possibly more printed and put under the current sign that's there?
Well, the biggest thing is, if, like you go to an airport, you see, or go to the mall, it tells you where you're at. And you are here, and this is over here. Everybody looks at that big sign on the building and says, oh, okay, here's the rules. So, oh, I didn't see that one at the fence, you know, or you got tagged. And fence, signs aren't cheap, a good sign costs you some money. And they come up and tag them, if they got the right type of paint, an epoxy based paint, you, you have to throw the sign away. Taggers are a lot of fun. Taggers are a lot of fun. They tag it over at, uh, Lakeside Park quite a bit. It's getting tougher to get it off.
Well, and especially if we are having newly painted buildings.
Yeah.
We don't want that either.
Uh, again, I think the building, it, we could add glass on there. I think things that pertain to the water would, might be better served near the shore. Uh, we could also include, no, don't go past the rope, stay within the roped area and don't hang on the ropes. Because that pertains.
I think you did put stay, stay in the ropes, didn't you?
Maybe.
I think there is.
Oh, oh, I, my phone's in, I took a picture.
I've got it.
It's in mine.
So I'm looking at the, at the budget here. Where would, where would this fall under?
Improvement? That's against maintenance, maintenance?
Beach maintenance, but I don't think there's anything budgeted in there. Uh, I could be wrong, hold on. What, uh, account number do you see, Commissioner?
It's nine eighty-four improvement.
I see that, I, I see that nine eighty-four. I suppose we can place it there. We have funds there. But, uh, Commissioner Hutchins said beach impro, uh, beach repairs were.
Nine seventy is, uh, beach equipment and capital.
Seven.
If you put it under there.
Nine seventy? I don't, I don't see it on the.
Seventy.
It's on the. No, I know, but on this.
Oh, and this. Oh, no. I was, I was looking at this other.
For this year, twenty-four.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it under expenditures, nine seventy.
It was, I guess, nine seven one.
I mean, would it be, it would be nine seventy-one?
Oh, that's park.
Yeah, that's park, that's equipment capital. Maybe under repairs and maintenance, would just be nine thirty-one.
That's a good one.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, would we recommend that the funds, uh, that we spend no more than a thousand?
That's a good.
Is that a good number?
I think that's perfect, yeah.
That we spend no more than a thousand, so this way it gives staff a limitation and some guidance. And if she needs more, then she will come back to us and, and let us know what those costs were. And a manager, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, and one, one more thing, um, just because. Beach repairs would be nine thirty. I don't see nine thirty beach repairs. Okay. I guess the reason it's not on this one is because if I look at the line, uh, on this others, it, there's no money budgeted in this year's account, is what I'm thinking. She only placed the items that we had budgeted.
Okay.
Okay. We're learning. The only other thing, since we're, we're looking at this, at this report here, I, I'd like to point out to you all that twenty-three, twenty-four has the actual column. So you can see how we did twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the year after this.
Okay. Which is. And that was a recommendation, or actually, that was a request by, um, the treasurer and the supervisor when we presented at the budget, or, uh, to the township board, uh, for our budget. So that was what they requested.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking at, uh, we're looking at ninth, item number nine thirty-one. Is there a motion, do I hear a motion from the commission? To, uh, to add or to spend up to one thousand for, uh, signs at the beach, and in particular have a two signs that I, that, or three signs that I'm thinking of, maybe there's just two. One would be on the foam. And the other sign would be on, uh, say that again, a glass. So, yeah, there was a, there was a third, and the third would be, uh, the, the children, yeah. Uh, attendants or whatever, or participants, or people that come into, into the park. They must be accompanied by, uh, an adult at all times. We should have that on there. Okay, is there, is there a, a motion for that item? That's why, again, when we, when we put this on the agenda, we need, we need to make sure that we do that. We'll, we'll do that next time.
Before we motion, there was a sign that I referenced last week that stated fourteen people, or children fourteen and under need to be accompanied by an adult.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to be specific about children's age.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, usually by the state of Michigan, you can become an emancipated adult at the age of seventeen. An emancipated adult at the age of seventeen. And usually if you commit a crime, if you're seventeen or around that age, you can be tried as an adult. Like sixteen and up. So usually it's emanc, my nephew was an emancipated adult by a judge when he was seventeen years old.
I know, but how are you going to tell if you've been emancipated?
I, I'm just wondering, because I know that they offer babysitting classes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering what age.
That's why I use the word adults and whatever the word adult means, is, is the only thing I was hanging on to. I guess you consider an adult at the age of seventeen? Is that correct?
It's what emancipated adult.
Though one thing, um, says babysitting classes for twelve-year-olds near me.
The twelve-year-olds can babysit.
Mm-hmm. Twelve to fourteen, I think, is usually the babysitter age.
Mm-hmm. Well, there's still a big difference, though. When you're babysitting, you're in a home, someone's home, you're, you know, you still have access to everything. But when you're out at the beach, it's a little bit more open.
Where babysitting at somebody's home, you're a captive audience.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting anything.
Okay, all right. That's why I said adults.
Age, I don't know. I mean.
You want to increase the age to sixteen?
I don't.
I, I actually think it would be difficult for our staff to enforce that.
Yeah.
To enforce which?
To requirements.
To, to say seventeen or something like that.
It worked before.
Did it? Okay.
Most people around us, or if you see somebody who looks like they're ten or twelve years old, and they say, I'm sixteen or seventeen, you go get out of here. You know? You know, you go by truth of people. You know, you gotta have faith in somebody. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll throw this out. May, maybe the minimum, like, I'm, I'm picturing a drop-off.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not, I'm not considering people dropping off fourteen-years-old, thirteen-year-old. I think those people can stand alone. But I'm thinking, like, in the ten to twelve range. I mean, they might need supervision. I, I, and I, I'm, I'll get to this in public, or in our commissioner comments.
Okay.
Forever, we've waited for school to get out.
Mm-hmm.
We're calling them our target audience. I've been to the beach this spring. It's, it's mothers asking to come in with their children. I mean, it, it's, it just seems ridiculous that we're partying to, to children at school. But now we're saying you can't come without a parent. So let's, we need to draw a line and be sensible about it. I think maybe ten, I'll go to twelve, but let's be specific and stick to it.
Um, in the theaters, I'm trying to think.
PG and all the other ratings and stuff are for, usually have to be seventeen years or older to get in.
You must, you must be accompanied by an adult. Yeah.
But I say, the biggest thing is all you do is go on your electronic device here and find out an adult is considered, as far as I know, is seventeen years old.
But are we an adult-only beach? Are we adult-only beach?
No, no.
No, we're not talking about an adult-only beach. We're talking about an adult-only supervised at our beach. You don't have to be seventeen to get in the beach. You have to be accompanied by an adult. And you can check with our insurance company. They should tell you what the liability rate is.
You know, I think that's, I think that's a good idea, because we can go around and around here.
Yeah, we can see.
Why don't, why don't we, uh, direct our manager to please contact the, uh, the, uh, insurance company, or insurance, I believe, and say what they said.
Bee lady has got.
Uh-oh.
She's laughing outside.
What does it say?
Michigan doesn't have a specific law stating a minimum age at which a child can be left unattended at a beach. However, there are some important considerations. No minimum age, but recommendations. Michigan law does not provide a specific minimum age for leaving a child unsupervised. Um, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services recommends that children seven and younger should not be left alone for any period of time. Safety and supervision are key, regardless of the lack of a specific law. Parents or caregivers are responsible for the safety and welfare of children. Leaving a child unsupervised at a beach, especially in or near the water, can be considered neglect, depending on the child's age, maturity, and the potential dangers present. Recommendations for older children. For children ages eight to ten, the recommendation that they can be left unattended for brief periods, not exceeding one and a half hours, and only during daylight or early evening hours. Beach-specific rules, some locations like Park District of Highland Park have their own rules. For example, the Park District of Highland Park states that children under eleven must be accompanied by an adult. It is important to check for any specific rules or regulations at the beach you plan to visit. Supervision by an adult. If a child is left unattended, Michigan law defines unattended as being without supervision of someone thirteen years of age or older who is not legally incapacitated.
Wow, that's a big sign.
Yeah.
That's a little rating.
That actually was what I was thinking, thirteen.
Thirteen or thirteen. Okay, around thirteen. I mean, we can, we can have, thank you, thank you, darling.
That was good.
You know, this is, this is good conversation, because we really need to, you know, figure it out. And we're, we're all learning. And obviously, things can happen. And, uh, even with adults, you know, uh, not just children. So if you're out there by yourself and, and you're out there, fall asleep and blah, blah, blah. Who knows, you can be eaten by a bear. I'm just kidding. I'm saying that because one of the youngsters that came on our tour, she was looking for bears. Remember that? I thought she was something. But, uh, but anyways, uh, all kidding set aside, if, if the commission wishes to put an age limit, I, I have, I have no qualms. I think, uh, thirteen would be a good start.
Fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen. Well, children of the age of fourteen, can we say that?
Do you want me to check with the insurance company?
Yes, please do.
I can reach out to, uh, Frank Demmers, who was the loss and liability person who met with us.
Yes, that would be excellent.
And he, uh, he would be happy to help us.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna leave that to the manager, and she will come back and report to us. But in the meantime, uh, whatever, do we all agree that whatever, uh, whatever the liability person says, we should go?
Yeah, because they're the ones paying the bills.
Right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve up to one thousand? And we can take from, uh, repairs and maintenance and, uh, for three signs. Again, the sign is for, uh, caution regarding foam, uh, glass, no, allowing no glass, uh, containers to come into the beach. And then last is the supervision of children, of, uh, children. And, and we will, uh, we will, uh, abide by whatever our insurance company recommends. Okay, is there a motion for that? Or does anybody wish to amend that motion and add something else to it, or say it differently?
I motion to approve.
What I said?
The thousand dollars in reference to three signs.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Commissioner, okay, there's a motion made by Commissioner Carl. Support? I support that. Supported by, uh, Commissioner Earl. Roll call, please.
Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Right.
Very good.
Yes. Okay, uh, moving right along. Thank you all for that. Uh, I'm not happy about this other one. Painting at the beach and our nature center, choosing colors. I was just trying to let the manager pick colors. But, uh, but she refused.
So I don't want to have anybody spend the next twenty years like they did with the previous manager complaining about the green that's on the nature center. So, uh, actually, Commissioner Car, Carol and, uh, Brenda, our staffer, and I met the other day, and we did go through some of the things. And just to confirm, our, uh, painting contractor, that we did decide on exterior painters. They do offer a color consultation. So I had spoken to them today and told them we were meeting tonight, and we might have a better idea tomorrow. And, uh, then we can still decide if we'd like to go ahead and, uh, meet with them if we don't actually choose colors tonight.
Do you have colors? Did they, did they bring, give you?
We have.
Oh, my God. Oh, my.
So, um.
This is the guard house, guard jacket, that's the color.
So, so can we take a five-minute break perhaps? And then, or we can do it now. Let's do a five-minute break just to go take a look at the colors. So, uh, just a five-minute break to the audience. We're gonna, we're just gonna go right over there to the table, and we'll go look at the colors. And then we'll come back and we'll make some decisions. Is that okay? Five minutes, please, and it is seven oh seven, and we will be back in five minutes, seven thirteen, okay? Uh, yes, let's vote on that. Uh, is there a motion to recess for five minutes? So that we can, uh, examine potential colors for our, uh, for the, uh, painting at the beach and the nature center.
I make that motion.
Okay, is there a support? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wright, supported by Commissioner Carl. I'm gonna just say all those in favor.
I have.
Hi.
I, I will point out those, that when we did, um, take samples, uh, outside, it made a big difference. And since this is exterior painting, uh, that might be something to consider.
Okay, can we take ten minutes?
What's that?
I said, fine, we're gonna have to go outside and take a look at this.
Since it's evening and the sun is down.
I know, we're, we, we can do it.
This will just give us an idea.
An idea. Just ten minutes. Is there okay to, for that motion?
I amend my motion to make a ten-minute recess to check out ink colors.
Okay, do you?
Prove.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ten minutes. Okay, so we will resume in ten minutes, which is seven oh eight, seven eighteen. Thank you. And definitely, the colors do change, uh, whether it's inside, outside, or when you're looking at the sunlight. And uh, so we're gonna ask that the manager, please, uh, we get, we gave her some idea on some of the colors that we liked. And then when she meets with the consultant, they will tell us.
And, and I would welcome any commissioners who want to join me.
Okay, anybody? Well, you probably, this is, this is, this is.
I'm done.
You know, thank you so much for this. This is a lot of work. I know how hard this is. Maybe you can come help me pick a white for my. But uh, but we appreciate it. So with all due respect, Commissioner, I would like for you to join our manager, please, sir.
We haven't set the date yet, but I would be happy to uh.
It'll have to be soon, okay, because the time is running out.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
It'll be soon. So if at all possibility, I would appreciate it because I know how important this is. Okay? Thank you, sir. Okay, moving right along then. So the decision uh, on choosing colors, we're going to ask our manager to please meet with a consultant and ask a, a Commissioner Carl to, to join. Anyone else who wants to go? And Commissioner Hutchins, anyone, uh, Commissioner Earl, you live close by, it might be something you might want to attend as well. Okay, because we're gonna live with this for a while. And I, I think the other point that was made very clear during our little session was that uh, we're gonna do our best to be consistent with our colors and our signage. And this is something that we're gonna work on later. So that when folks or individuals see our sign, they know this is the Holly Township Parks and Recreation Department. And uh, and they won't think it's anything else. So we have to work on that. Okay? And the same thing with our colors. So we're gonna leave that to, to this uh, this group. Okay? Anything else? I don't think we have to vote on the colors. I guess the vote would be, we're leaving it up to the consultant. I don't think there's a, does, does anybody feel there needs to be a motion or we've given enough direction to the manager verbal?
I believe we've given enough direction to management.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, let's move right along then. Uh, under new business, A, uh, we are going to discuss and, and uh, and consider approving, or prove, I should say, discuss and approve Pastor Phil's request to allow First Baptist Church of Holly to bring their bounce house and ice cream to the Holly Township Beach on July third, twenty twenty five.
And I did hear from Pastor Phil, unfortunately, he, tonight, he had a conflict. So he was not able to join us, but he welcomes uh, your input because he would like to bring his extra things to our beach. And, and he had been here previously.
Okay.
Well received. I make a motion that we approve Pastor Phil's request to bring it bounce house and along with his ice cream.
Okay, uh, motion by uh, Commissioner Carl, supported by Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So motion passed. Next item, the insurance renewal with the uh, Michigan Municipal League. We, we have a Meadowbrook Insurance. And in this case, we're looking at uh, workers comp and uh, and the liability and insurance uh, property pool uh, policies. So I'm, uh, are you asking us to approve this uh, renewal uh, tour? Okay.
Because um, it, the new policy will go into effect July first. And so um, they need us to approve um, the workers camp um, compensation fund, which has a total of one thousand two hundred seventy six. And that uh, includes a nine hundred and eighty one uh, dividend credit um, from previous year and also um, our general policy. And it went up just slightly. Um, previously, it had been nine thousand five hundred twenty nine. And this year, it is coming in at nine thousand seven hundred sixty nine for a difference of two hundred and forty dollars. And the reason that they gave was the property values increased by twenty eight thousand six hundred ninety six due to a four percent inflation guard. And the second reason is the total payroll increased by twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety four dollars. From previous. So those were their recommendations.
All right, so this is to be paid out of this year's budget, correct?
I, I don't know because it will go into effect on July first.
Okay, so I, I think it, I think it does, to be honest with you. And then next year, again, will just be a, a few days ahead. We do have sufficient funds, uh, if we wish to do that. We've, we've uh, we budgeted thirteen thousand this year. We did spend some money of fourteen eighty. Do you know what that is all about? I don't, I don't see it or remember. Why we would spend fourteen eighty? But anyway, we have expenditures of fourteen eighty and we still have a balance of eleven thousand.
Well, the um, other thing is, is that we're later getting this because of the change in uh, commission. And that, so uh, in the future year, we would actually start this process earlier.
I see.
So there would be no question of whether it's this year or next year.
Okay.
Um, so we might end up potentially uh, to, you know, in the same year.
Okay.
So.
All right. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the um, insurance renewal with the Michigan Municipal League at a cost not to exceed nine thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollars?
One question?
Yes, all, all.
Manager Blanchard, you, you referenced the increase in s- wages. Is that comparing what year to what year? Because, look, we had a lot of wages when um, Tony Brinker was here. And then we dropped when she resigned. We dropped down to nearly just staff at the beach here. So are we comparing wh- what particular year?
I, I would think it would be twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three.
And I, I would sense a decrease in, in salary or wages.
No, I wouldn't think so. Because it didn't, um, there, there was a couple of years, wasn't there, when uh, you only had Amy a- as a staff person?
A- and, and, you know, the, the, the kids at the beach and that, yeah. So where is an?
I think there were a couple of years when you had very little staff until Amy got hired, right?
I, Joe could speak for that.
Isn't this gonna be on our spreadsheets here?
It would be. You can, you can see it. You can see, I was, that's what I was looking at for twenty three, twenty four. And if you look in the back, uh, you can see the insurance item, it's nine ten. So it's still. It looks like we paid nine thousand two hundred and forty two for insurance. And then we had a, another expenditure of one thousand eighty five dollars and ninety four cents. And they kept it at thirteen thousand.
I, I guess I'm looking.
I do see your point, though.
The actual for twenty three, twenty four was twenty three thousand. Twenty two, twenty three was thirty four. The actual for 23, 24 was 23,000, 22, 23 was 34,000. So we actually decreased in salary. Yeah. And your reference was the reason the rate increased because we increased in salary. So.
Well, it's still very minor, I think. And I.
Well, it's a minor amount that it's going up.
Correct.
$240.
Right. I think it's a minor amount and it's, yeah, I think we have good insurance and I think Meadowbrook is a good job. I've worked with them. Oh, my God.
And usually every year there's a minimum inflation rate built into that. Nothing goes stays the same much or doesn't go down unless you get rid of a lot of liability.
That's a good point. Okay, any other comments or questions or concerns?
Can I point out too, on this last paragraph of this on the general insurance? It does say, the Board of Directors of MML Liability and Property Pool voted to return another post-renewal dividend in 2025 to renewing members. The Holly Parks and Recreation's portion of the dividend return is $770. The Holly Parks and Recreation will receive the dividend the month after paying the renewal premium.
Oh, good.
And I would I would earmark that for your file to make sure they follow up with that. So we put it back into our budget.
Yeah, they do.
It's revenue. Yep.
No, I agree, but they do. I remember this. Okay. Hearing none, thank you for pointing that out, Madam Manager. Is there a motion to approve the insurance renewal with the Michigan Municipal League Meadowbrook Insurance at a cost not to exceed $9,769? And it is within our budget too, by the way. Check that. We have in this year's budget for insurance.
Okay, but there's two separate ones, right? There's the nine, 9,000.
9,769.
And.
Work comp.
And then the workers' comp, I'm sorry, 12,076. Oh, that I did not see that with a dividend.
Unless you want to do the vote separately for.
Yeah, we believe it has to be separate.
The way it is on the agenda, we have to do them separate.
Okay.
Okay, I you know what? And now I see the I see what that 13 was all about. That was for the workers' comp. Yep, I can forget it now. Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the renew, I should say, renew the liability and property pool insurance policy with a renewal with the Michigan Municipal League or Meadowbrook Insurance at a cost not to exceed $9,769? Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Okay.
My second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wright, second by Commissioner Carl. All those in favor, please say aye.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
It has to be a roll call vote.
Okay. Excellent. All right, then let's do a roll call vote, please. Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. So then, and thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. And then the next item is workers' comp. So I'm looking at the budget, okay? And after we do the night, if we add the two together, how much does that give us? And we're going to get a dividend credit on.
I believe it's 11,045.
Okay, 11,045. Let me see if we have enough.
It would be 910, right?
Mm hmm. It would be, yes, it would be 910. And we need to look at the 24, 25. And I'm looking at 910. So we have 11,520 left over. And how much did you say this is going to cost?
11,045.
11,045. Okay, so we do have sufficient funds, right on the edge. Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve our workers' comp insurance renewal with the Michigan Municipal League or Meadowbrook Insurance at a cost not to exceed $1,276 with a dividend credit of $981?
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The dividend credit of 981 is, I believe, included in the 1276 total.
Okay, well, that's included on this. So they've already given us that. So we're not, we don't expect to see.
Right.
Another.
Just wanted that to be clear.
Okay, all right, then. That is so noted. Does that understand with everybody? Or so we just leave it at at 1276? Let's just leave it at 1276 then. Okay.
So the 981, we don't.
No, because it's already part of it. It's already part of it. And it'll still be 11,045, right? Okay. I wasn't sure. Had to ask. It better be. So you and your numbers. Okay. So the motion was made by Commissioner Wright, is that correct? Or we haven't heard we haven't heard anybody yet? Okay, is there a motion, please?
I will make the motion to approve the
Workers' Comp.
Insurance insurance coverage through the Michigan Municipal League for Workman's Comp with not to exceed $1,276.
Okay. Is there a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Carl. So the motion was made by Commissioner Wright and supported by Commissioner Carl. Because it's a finance matter, I'll ask for a roll call. Carl?
Yes.
Hutchins?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
De Sessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Thank you. Very good. Thanks. We're moving right along. Okay, item number C. This is to approve contract for Elite Imaging Systems for a five-year copier agreement. And this is $124.93 per month with a cup with a possible overage cost due to you to use. Okay.
I will point out that this is for a five-year plan. And we were talking today with Commissioner Hutchins and Commissioner Wright. And Commissioner Hutchins was pointing out that the machine that we have is already older, right? And so I don't know if that enters into it, but the the overall cost of this, you know, is not a huge amount. But we do have a little bit that we pay extra each month due to overages in copies. So and then I think Commissioner Wright, were you going to ask something or say something about the copier or?
I don't know. I just think five years is a long time. How old is our current copier? I don't mean to interrupt.
At least 10 or 12 years old.
Oh.
I I I don't believe the age of the copiers are the issue, because according to what I'm reading on the on the contract, they handle all maintenance and troubleshooting. So I don't think the the age of the machine is in question or is an issue. My concern is that we're spending 125 or with the overages, apparently, on average, $128 a month. With if we had no overages whatsoever, the monthly payment of 12493, that's about $1,500 a year. Now, I know, you know, in the scheme of things, that doesn't sound like much. But over a three-year period, the cost of owning our own multifunctional printer compared to leasing and paying for a contract is about half. That that's including toner and maintenance and all that.
So I've done studies on owning and the big issue is maintenance and also
Warranty.
Warranty, and it breaks. And unfortunately, I I'm I'm still would support a contract more so than us owning. I know it saves us, could potentially save it, well, will save us some dollars, but in the long run, when you look at at, you know, having to buy a brand new one all over again, that was an issue. I've studied that extensively. That's why I asked about the age. And I I see your point, Commissioner, but I guess for my concern would be I don't think we need a lot of bells and whistles for our printer, right? We just copy. That's all we do. Is that correct? Do we use it for anything else? Do we use it, say, for example, what is what are some of the functions? Does it collate? Does it?
Need that, though. You want.
Yeah, you would need collation, collate. Yeah, does it?
Staple.
Staple, doesn't.
Don't we have a staple function right now? And I had discussed that with him. And because we don't do newsletters that they used to do, I don't really see any point to having it. Yeah, I don't know if it's worth it to them to come and take it off or anything, but I don't think it's a function.
I think staples would be good. I mean, you know, yes.
Past history on this machine out here. We used to put out bi- bi-yearly of 3,350 usually four-page newsletter. And that machine did it all. That's the Rolls Royce of machines because that's what we needed.
Okay.
And I'd like to buy a Chevy.
I know, but it's it's already a Chevy because it's pretty old now.
That's it. And my my contention on that is, like everything else with the fire fire suppression system and your guys' electronic devices here, parts, well, we can't fix that no more after three, four years.
Well, they they do say in the agreement that they will repair it. So they are they're.
If you read the fire print, if they got parts.
No, the I haven't read the fire print, but I'm pretty sure that that my experience is that they will fix it. If they don't, then they have to give us a new machine. At least it's another machine. And then again, it depends on the machine and all kinds of stuff. We have to come back and and look at it again.
And that machine being so old, that's probably why it's lasted so long. That's when they used to build them with something. And now everything is disposable. It's so many years.
Okay. Any other more discussions?
I think what Commissioner, I'm sorry, Manager Blanchard said, that there are bells and whistles that aren't being used. Commissioner Hutchins says it's a Cadillac, or did you say Rolls Royce?
Rolls Royce.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks.
And probably, and you referenced, oh, now he wants a Chevy. So why don't we shop and and determine what we need and get new proposals on what?
Or to lease or buy both ways.
Yeah, I guess I'm against. I I agree.
Okay, so the only issue here is what is the deadline that we have here? Because we need the copier.
Currently, we are on a month-to-month basis because they again had an issue with timing and being able to contact somebody. And so it got to the point where the representative that we have, he actually drove out here one day at 9:00 in the morning from Troy and decided to actually, you know, come and meet with us personally, although he didn't call ahead. He took a chance on us not being here. But so, yeah, he actually came in and we talked and that. And since then, we've been emailing back and forth and that. So this is the proposal that they came up with. So.
I just think five years. I mean, it stays, the price stays the same for five years.
Correct.
Okay, well, it's not about considering.
Why don't we pursue three bids on a on a machine that we think serves us in what our needs are?
So let me question, ask the manager, does this machine do what you need? Do we need to go out?
Well, currently, for what I do, I do, but you know, I'm not a tech person and I don't do fancy newsletters or anything like that.
So it does. It does what you need to do.
It does. I don't know. Commissioner Wright might have more input as to once we get all the technology hooked up where it can go to that and scan and do all the things.
Does it scan?
It does scan. I I don't think there's a question that this machine does everything that we need to anymore. So that's not the issue. The issue is, in my opinion, is it the the functions of the printer are to such a degree that what we're using it for is far below what its intended use is.
But I, again, with all due respect, they don't have a printer or a copier, I should say, that just scans and prints. Okay, you're not going to find that anymore.
I'm sorry, but yes.
We do have?
They absolutely do.
And cheaper?
Yes.
My comment is, I'm going to rephrase my comment about our Rolls Royce. At that time, back before the dark ages, that was a Rolls Royce. Nowadays, it's still a Rolls Royce, but is it needed, you know? That's it. We're paying for a Rolls Royce with shitty hubcaps. You know what I'm saying? We can get by a lot reasonably, even if we lease. That way, somebody else can repair the dang thing. Like I say, at that time, that was a Rolls Royce because we did a beautiful newsletter, gorgeous, in color and everything.
So it's not to say that we won't do it again.
The price of mailing is so absurd. Even we had bulk mailing also.
Correct.
That it still costs us quite a bit of money to send it up. As you know, being affiliated with newsletters from PFOS and everybody else, it ain't cheap.
Yeah.
That's why we have social media where you can put all this on and send it everywhere in the world for practically nothing.
I think this is, I this is just my opinion, but I respectfully disagree. I think this is a good machine. I think that it does what we need. And in the event we need for it to do a little bit more, it's there already. I think the cost is reasonable and they're not looking at increasing it. I think five years is too long. I think, you know, maybe three, to lease it for three years would be better. And then we could look at at getting another one.
We're through then through our commission.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. So but if you all want to go out to get another bid, again, I've I've done printers and very few companies just want to give you copy and scan. They have other things that we can do. And given the thing, if we want to stay up with technology, I would think that we want our printer to do a little bit more. Say, for example, the manager here is printing a job. She's at her house or home or whatever. She can send that over to that message to the copier and they can print it in the morning and it'll be all said and done. So she comes into work. There's your print. Otherwise, she has to come in, manually do it, blah, blah, blah. There's a lot of things that we don't use that we should use. And I mean, again, it's just some things that I think that if we become a little bit more accustomed and and be a little bit more informed in terms of what our machine can do, I think that we can find, I think we can find it. But if if you all wish to to go out and look for bids and just continue to go on a month-to-month, we will take a roll call on that. I I don't I don't think we need to, but that's just me. But but if the if the commission feels differently, then we can direct the manager to to go get more more bids.
One point, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I I understand what you're saying. And believe me, I'm all about technology and, you know, make making as future-proof as possible. You know what I mean? Scalability is important, especially when we're planning to do more than what we're doing now. However, the multifunction printers, which is what that is, can do exactly the same thing that can do minus the stapling for half the price.
I I've yet to see that.
Okay.
Okay. But again, it's up to you, the commission here. Do I hear, is there a motion? Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Question, are you saying half the price of the because of the toner, because of how it's?
Yeah, yeah. What I was doing is I went through in with the elite contract that was presented with the package tonight. The monthly payment of 12493 is approximately 1,500 a year. Okay? I did some research and my research says that over three years, the the leased printer would be, you know, 12493 plus overages. Over three years, the one that I would suggest would be $58 a month. That's including toner, repair kits, maintenance, all that over three years. So it's it's about half of what we are paying now for the same technology that that can do.
But I'm saying that I think that this we could use this new tech technology more efficiently. If we start, like I said, you can you can direct it to have your your copies done for you in the morning or in the afternoon or whatever. If we get this other printer that just does two. If we get this other printer that just does two things, you won't be able to do that.
Well, I'm sorry, ma'am. The, the, the functions are the same. Both printers would scan, copy, actually fax and print. They're all for multifunction printer.
But I'm not saying fax. I'm not saying fax. I'm saying where the manager or any of the staff, if they're working on a project. And they say, I want this. By the morning or the afternoon, they can, they can send a, give a command, remote command to this machine. I'm not so sure that the new machine would be able to do that. You're saying, you're saying it would.
Absolutely.
Okay, I respectfully disagree, but that's just me.
Sure, though, that either it's my incapability or it's the machine. Or just the uh connection uh through the internet or whatever. Because there's many times that I will have my computer at home. And inadvertently, because I have to switch from our printer to my home printer. I, I will sometimes leave our printer here on and. It will show up, but it won't show up at the time that I get here.
Did you direct it to do that?
Well, I mean, inadvertently, I end up hitting it when I'm expecting it to print at home. But it doesn't. And then I realize that, oh, you know, I have it on the wrong printer and.
Oh, I see.
That, so um it does not work until I sign in here and hook to the internet.
We can, we could fix that so that you can get the, the, uh, the person to make it so that your commands will come directly from your computer. And it doesn't have to, can be done remote, can't be. Okay, so let's, I, I know we're gonna go round and round here. Uh, let's make a decision. Is there a motion to go out to rebid?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
To use this printer until we get facts about what's the new technology available and the prices. Because we gotta be fiscally responsible. So if we can do something that does the same thing that we got. A Rolls Royce to a Rolls Royce, an apple to apple, for half the price, I'm all for it. So I think we all just continue our, my motion is to continue our.
Contract.
Monthly contract till we get more information about the new technology, then at that time we'll make a decision.
To go out to bid?
Yes.
Okay. Well, who's going to do that research?
Leave it to me voluntarily. I have no problem.
Put that on your A-list.
On your A-list, okay.
We'll get you on the tractor next.
I'll, I'll pencil it in.
Okay, he'll pencil it.
My second, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, um.
Hutchins' motion.
Okay, I will support that motion to research because I one hundred percent agree. If we can do what we need and save us money, I'm all for that. I've, I've done some studies myself in the past and I have found the cost to be very minimal. And the only place that I found the most cost savings was on, on the, on the. Type of materials it used to print. The, is it the toner or you use something else in order to, for the ink, the print, the printing of that? But uh, but the other thing that I like about some of the newer machines is that. It tells you who uses this, who used the machine. Uh, there's more security on the machine. Uh, the other thing that I, that I examined was uh. That it, it can count exactly, you know, who, who did what and how, you know, and so it keeps us honest, you know? The machine itself. So anyways, if we can come up with some stuff like that and, and we can go on and continue to go on a month-to-month, if you don't mind. I'm just gonna do a roll call here. Yes, and then.
Can I ask one question? So the machines that you are, were looking into. Do, do they have the same toner capacity as what this one does? Because this, our toners are like this long and, you know, they're not the little box.
Right. No, I'm not talking about the little boxes.
No, he's, he's talking about, yeah.
And that's why this one's so big is because we did thirty-five hundred mailings, three, four sheet mailings.
And I see, and I see the point.
A big, a big trough.
And I see the point, and I see the point. But I, again, I, I. I think this is a reasonable price considering everything else and it is for five years and they're not going to increase it. Uh, I think that uh if we get a smaller. The savings will be minimal, just my personal opinion, okay? Again, I've, I've done research myself on this matter. But, okay, all those in favor to allow us to continue on a month-to-month basis with our contract? And ask uh Commissioner Wright to examine this issue and hopefully bring it back uh within a month. Is that enough time?
I think that's.
Okay, all right, reasonable. And if you need more time, you know, there's no problem. At least within a month. Come back and uh tell us your findings. And, and then from there, we will move on and we will decide whether or not we're gonna, we're gonna go out to rebid, okay? Is that it? Okay, yes, sir.
Um, just uh, just um point of uh information, I believe. Since it is fiscal, it has to be a roll call.
It has to be a roll call, well, because we're spending the money, we're gonna continue our contract, X amount of dollars with this company until we research our.
Okay, good point, point, okay, noted. All right, roll call, please. Wright.
Yes.
Hutchins'.
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
DeSessa?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, so now we're on to item D. This is for our meeting dates. And this is for us to say for the next, uh, next fiscal year. Is that correct, Madam Manager? What our.
Correct.
Meeting dates are. Is there, um, I guess we're so close. Okay, never mind, go ahead.
What's that?
No, I'm just thinking we need to, we need to identify those dates. That's fine. We're just not prepared. To give the list. And we have to do it like, yeah, because next month, it'll be next month. Okay, never mind. I'm looking at the calendar in my head.
Would you like me to email them to you?
Nope, 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 that's fine. Let's go ahead and proceed, please.
Because I, I honestly never thought about this until it was brought up today.
Okay.
That it has to be, you know, posted in the paper for that. So, okay, so um. July ninth, August thirteenth, September tenth, October eighth. November twen- now, the other question is. Commissioner Hutchins had brought up that in years past, that there were times when the commission did not meet on certain months. So um, November twelfth, December tenth, January fourteenth. February eleventh, March eleventh, April eighth, May thirteenth. And June tenth, if we stick to the second Wednesday. And the other thing is, is that um Commissioner Wright did ask. If it might be possible to change the time from six o'clock to six-thirty.
Is there anything in our uh bylaws or anything like that that requires us to have, meet at six o'clock?
I don't know.
Their own rules, but our rules of procedure, we'd have to change it because right now the rules of procedure say six, correct? So we have to change our rules of procedure.
Okay.
And if we want to drop our, why we dropped out November, December via lack of business. And we're doing the same thing in the village, November and December, we don't have any business. So we say, we save X amount of dollars. Right? Dropping off two months.
I don't, I don't know. I've, I've done this all my life and we have business every month.
Well, the council used to meet twice a month, village council, however.
Yeah, I remember that. Yes, I remember that, yes.
So things change, that's why we changed. Some ancient history. It's up to everybody here.
What is the township, your line, your next special?
The township.
Holy Township.
Holy Township, I have no idea. I know they're working on many things, but I don't, I don't know.
What's up?
The township meet twelve times, eleven times, ten times.
The township meets the third Wednesday of each month. However, there have been times when they have canceled due to lack of business as well.
And we can do that. We can set these meetings up like that. I would prefer that. To have a date in case the manager needs.
It seems to cancel, I mean, and still have full schedule.
Correct.
Yes, true.
I would much rather that we have dates and then if we don't have any business, then we can.
And the only reason the last couple of years, we've had problems. Yeah, we're worse because we're setting. Our manager, we had new, new people on board, so we had a lot of work to do. That's why we had special meetings and workshop. And it was an exception. Once we get this thing rolling down tracks, away we go. Yep, it's getting there.
We're getting there. I, I appreciate all the work you all do so much and I cannot thank you enough. So what say you, um, y'all? Should we set up these meetings or do, want to go ahead and?
Deadlines, the last month we got, nevermind.
Okay, so we need a dead, the deadline, let's do it now and then.
We have to do it tonight.
Okay.
Mary has to get it over to uh.
Okay, so November, uh, November twelfth and December tenth. I think that's, it's still reasonable, even the holiday season. I don't think it'll interrupt there, you know, so if we had to. But again, here again, if there is a need to, to cancel, we can still do that.
Uh, for clarity, are you saying we don't meet November, December?
No, I'm saying leave the meeting dates in the event, yes, that we, that we.
Next fiscal year, and I think the motion will probably remain six thirty, wouldn't it?
Six thirty to change, to update our.
So we're looking at date and.
And time, does anybody have a problem with six thirty? I don't, I don't, I understand. I appreciate everything.
Make the motion, like.
I appreciate it. Another thirty minutes, of course, it just means our meetings are, you know, a little bit later, but uh. And, and during the, during the winter season, when it gets darker earlier and, you know, but um.
Just gives us the incentive of getting things done.
Is it?
Staying on track.
Like that, I like that.
And usually the traffic backs off after six o'clock, though. This gets to be a pain in this race train.
Yes, at night it is kind of scary. I've driven out of here at night and there's no lights and I'm just praying that I can see the road. So, okay, I uh. What, what say you? You have another comment?
I don't.
Okay.
I can't, we're ready to motion.
All right, so I'm saying, my recommendation would be that we keep these meeting dates. And then as we get closer to November and December, if we feel that there is no, nothing that the manager needs, then we can postpone. Of course, as Commissioner Hutchins stated, i- if there's an emergency or if we need to have a special meeting for whatever case, we can also call that. So uh, right now I'm saying, let's leave them on. Let's uh go ahead and give that and let the, let the people know that these are the dates that will be available.
Is that a motion?
And, no, I can't make the motion. And then, and then change the time as well. I'm asking Commissioner Wright to consider that.
Well, I make the motion to approve the next uh fiscal year's um schedule. Meeting twelve times a year um on the second Wednesday of each month. Changing the time to six-thirty PM from six PM. And, yeah.
Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Okay, uh, motion by, by Commissioner Wright, supported by Commissioner Hutchins. Roll call?
Yeah, because we have to spend money to put in the ad, add the paper.
Okay, so then we go back to uh roll call, yes. Okay, roll call. Carl?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
DeSessa? Hutchins?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes, that has passed.
Yes. Okay, getting closer to the end, uh, reports, uh, staff report, um, Madam Manager.
Um, I wanted to point out, uh, Commissioner Wright, when he was doing our technology. He came across this defibrillator and it is completely obsolete. The pads and everything are um way out of date. And so um, I don't know if we just wanna say to look into it. I did um kind of research just on the internet. And a new defibrillator um is thirteen hundred dollars and up. And a refurbished defibrillator that I saw was um ranged in price from five hundred and fifty to nine fifty. And I'm sure. Find any range in between there. So I don't know if that falls within something that will have to be on the next agenda. Or if you think that we should just go ahead and.
Well, um.
And, and I will say that our staff person, Tom, uh, used to be a firefighter. And he said one of the biggest problems with defibrillators is the fact that nobody knows how to use them correctly.
That was my right.
So he said, if we're getting one, we have to train people to use it.
My suggestion, Lord, the staff is to get a hold of the fire chief. And they're gonna be trying to set up one of their bays for CPR and stuff, and I'd handle the evaluate that. And maybe the fire department gives a discount. I think that one was donated to us.
Okay.
We used to take that from here, the beach, and then we'd bring it back here. And we had some of our staff that knew how to do that defibrillation. I was the EMT, but I have played with one of those, shot my daughter or something, you know? But that's when the fire chief, I explained to him that if they wanted to have a class here to contact you, Mary. Or when he started, you're, you're starting to plan, I have a class that we have to fire all and all. So CPR, hands-on CPR and defibrillators.
I, I know that uh the last fire chief came, uh, we talked about that.
Yeah.
And they have a staff person that they have that is more skilled with that. Uh, and so we're gonna contact them. Um, I'm not sure whether it's better to do it during the summer when people are out and about uh on vacations and things. Maybe it would be better to do in September, but I don't know. But it could be up to them as well.
No, I agree. I think we need, we need a lot of training and I, I think that it wouldn't hurt for us to ask. Uh, chief to come up with a recommendation, because I know that those things change. It doesn't look like the. Defibrillators that I looked at and worked with in the past. Uh, but that doesn't mean anything. Again, there's so many different models and things like that.
Then when there was about six thirty, we were all.
Okay.
And sometimes there are, and there are agencies that do donate as well, so we may want to look at that, like the Red Cross and people like that. Remember us, you know, getting something like that, even the counties sometimes I think of that, but. But again, we can check or maybe get a good deal as Commissioner um Hutchins was saying. If we can get through the same bids that the uh, that they do, we may be able to.
Well, the thing is, the fire department loves to see. Okay, places have defibrillators and hands-on CPR. I haven't taken a fresh course in CPR, but I can still have CPR.
No use on dogs.
Believe we need to make a statement that the Holy Township Parks do not condone that.
Yeah.
Type of activity.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Well, okay. That's absolutely true.
Teach to, yeah, Narcan. Because there is a dispenser at police department. And that's something we're publicing out here. You know, we got disc golfers, we got hikers, we got everybody, the whole public comes out here. And we ought to discuss that with the fire department because we have Little League nights. We got a lot of people. Narcan, fire extinguishers, defibrillators, CPR. Sometimes it'll be doing CPR on somebody in our beach, you know?
When someone has allergies, that allergy stick, whatever that's called, yeah.
Um, I would, I would like to say as part of my uh highly Little League duties, I am actually in the process of applying for grants for AEDs. Um, for the uh Little League because there are companies out there that donate to nonprofits. As well as to local government agencies. At, when, when I was going to get, when I'm going to get approved, I know I will, but when that happens, I will come from the commission and. You know, ask to place it here uh at the uh snack shack up, up top of the building. Um, however, I, I was thinking maybe I can look in the same information and try to apply in our name. That way we can, you know, get along the same.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And I, I do know the, the newer AEDs will actually talk you through exactly.
That's right, I've seen that.
Not to say that, you know, additional training is not, you know, good, because I think everyone should have a basic CPR first aid course. I, I think it is, I think it's good for everyone to have one.
I'd like to comment, I think these are great ideas. If you collectively took them all together, these would be great programs and have a community thing here. I think at the beach, we could teach, you know, what to do, how to approach a drowning victim, since we don't have lifeguards. I think at the beach, we could teach, you know, what to do, how to approach a drowning victim, since we don't have lifeguards. Uh, maybe we have the Red Cross come out and demonstrate, it could be CPR, i- it could be a whole program.
Shark bites, I'm kidding.
It's actually called the basic, it's B L S is the certification now, basic light.
Yeah, yeah. Used to be our ambulance crew in town, used to be only B L S.
Oh.
And they need your certification for any else. So they can only go out to, um, the village limits and not, or somebody else would have to transport to the hospital, but now we're A L S.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, great, all great ideas. And I, I would like for us to see that we can get more than just one, you know, like Commissioner, um, Carl was saying. One at the, one at the beach and, and one here. And, um, I don't know if we can put one out there by the, uh, you know, whenever they're, we're having a big, a, a big, uh, event or something like that, but at least have quick access to it, something like that.
Equipment is one thing, and I think that's mandatory too. But I think, you know, as far as teaching the community.
That's excellent.
Of CPR.
Yes.
I don't know anyone that's done that recently.
It's been a while.
We don't have a senior center, we don't have those. So, I mean, if we got behind that and promoted it, I think it'd be a, a good.
I think that would be excellent service for us.
Yeah.
Not the fire department involved too, because that can cover township also, so it could be shared responsibility.
Oh, definitely.
So you donate your manpower.
Yep.
There's, you know, they probably keep up on their group, but say something happened and they got there and their, their defibrillator wasn't working. Uh-oh, you know, I mean, they carry on their trucks, but at least we have something there, tools. There you go.
That they would be willing to collaborate. I think the both of them would be willing to collaborate.
Oh, yeah.
Possibly look at a, a safety week coming up during the summer and we get behind it and invite all them, we get.
Well, one thing I'd like to comment from the past is Safety Days in Holly. They were held at Lakeside Park, Safety Days of Holly. All the hospitals would be here, they'd land a medevac copter down there too, to show it up. So we used to have regular Safety Days in Holly, which involved all the fire departments, all, everybody, Groveland. Everybody be here with their rigs to show people and the kids, Safety Days in Holly. That's, we should be leaving that, cause it's been gone for years and years and years. How many times you hear about a nine-year-old kid saving his mother's life, you know, she had a, a triple liped fit or she bumped her head and was unconscious? Teach.
Yeah, yeah, a- all good points, all good points. Okay, so, uh, I guess the direction for you is let's, let's do a bit more research and then come back, but I think, I think, uh, you do have our support. You know, if we have to pay for at least one and, and maybe if, if, if Commissioner Wright knows of any grants and things like that, be happy to work with him on that. And, uh, and we'll, we'll get it together, so.
Mary needs help, go to the fire department, I'd like to.
Excellent.
With her.
Sure.
Get a little hit.
I don't doubt it one bit, Joe. Okay, uh, the other thing is, is we, um, had a guided walk recently.
Yes.
And I appreciated all of the park commissioners and all the other attendees that came out that day to learn about, uh, the wonderful natural resources that other parks do not have. Um, my thanks to Sue Julian, uh, with Headwaters Trails and the other, uh, people who attended from Headwaters Trails. Sue Julian is just a wealth of knowledge and experience here at this park. Um, years and years, she and Chuck, her husband, uh, came out here and did volunteer work and, um, even hosted WAM groups, which was the GL alternative at that time. And they would come out here sometimes two or three weekends a month. And they, uh, Chuck would always bring lunch as well. So it was amazing. And, and unfortunately, you can see the difference between that time and now. Not only is there less activity being done here, but there's more invasives, more types of invasives than what we used to have. So, um, I think that is one thing that we're gonna be looking into is trying to schedule actual stewardship days and invite the public to do that.
Also, Sisma was here also.
Correct, yeah, uh, even just this week, um, Stanton, uh, I think their name is Stanton. Uh, with Sisma, they're, they're consultants, they had come out and they were working at the back of the park applying, um, herbicide and, uh, cutting out some of the, some more of the wood invasion bases. And so, uh, I think they were here at least three different days.
And Keegan was, Sisma was on, walked, was very.
Excellent.
Formative.
Yeah, I have his name down here. His name is, uh, Keegan Sch- Schelteberg, uh, with Sisma. And, um, he gave a great perspective on how Sorensen Park compares with other parks that he works with. And one of the most impactful comments that I remember Keegan making was when he said that he hopes that there's a place like Sorensen with wild blue pine pa- plants and other native plants where he will be able to bring his grandchildren one day. The other thing is, is there's lots of items that are, uh, coming due all at this one time. And so we dealt with a couple of them, uh, tonight. And, um, Rachel and I talked, uh, this Tuesday when we had met, um, about actually, uh, getting the audit, uh, started working on now. Um, July is a good time for her because it's slower and it's right after our fiscal year when everything is. And it will also keep us from, uh, avoiding having been reported late to the state. So, um, unless anybody has an objection, we think that this might be more, a better way to approach it, where we just.
Are we looking to get another? Is that what you're saying, Mary? To, to search out for someone else?
Um, I, I think that, uh, we had, we didn't specifically talk about that. But I know that there were things that came up with our audit report, uh, that were questionable. And, uh, that I think, um, she did, um, we, we were talking about the fact that, uh, we came, the auditor felt that we came in two thousand dollars over our expense budget. And, um, they stated that they reported it to the state, although we never got any, uh, documentation on that from the state. Um, and I think there were things that Rachel, when she went back and was looking, she could understand why they said that. But she didn't necessarily agree that that should have happened, uh, the way that they had interpreted it. So, um, I don't think that, uh, anybody, Rachel or myself, or maybe the commissioners, would object to us pursuing, um, looking into other auditors as well.
Can I just make one, one thing clear, very, very clear? Um, uh, to the public, I don't want you all to think that we're looking for a new auditor because we didn't like the findings that came out from this audit. I, I just, I just don't, and please know that, that's not the reason. We're, we're looking at costs, cause we thought that the cost was, you know, very high. And, uh, yesterday, when I went to a, a meeting with the, with the, with the village, uh, I saw their costs for, for, uh, auditing and it's, my lord, just from the general side, it's forty thousand. I think they need to go out to bid on that. That's just a portion, that's not the full amount. They couldn't give us the full number. Maybe we did try to get it, but they didn't know what it was, cause they, they budgeted in different accounts. So I would assume sixty, maybe seventy.
Well, I, I point out though, that when our auditor was here, Alan Gamble, um, he did say that due to the pandemic, that they had kept costs low for those couple of years at the beginning of the pandemic. And then they started increasing them. So, you know, it may be that when we go out to look, that other companies are doing the same thing. You know, where, where they're higher right now. Um, but the, um, I guess the question is, is whether, uh, the work that actually goes into our audit is worth what they're charging.
I agree, and that was, I think that's a concern that we all had. We, we questioned that extensively, and I still would like to question them some more. And we've not received a letter yet from the state regarding the two thousand, so, yes, sir.
One thing we, what I'd like to find out is, we have to find out what caused our discrepancy. Not to blame anybody, but.
Do you want to say?
You know, is, was it our, was it our auditor or was it our financial advisors, you know? So we gotta find out what caused, what, what the discrepancy was, where it came from and how it got there. So the mistake isn't made again, so we don't get hung twice. That's my.
Well, we have to do that, sir, we have to do that, um, we must do that. When, when, when we get those kinds of reports, then, then the, the, the accountant and the manager need to come up with a solution to the, the items that they've mentioned, especially if they feel that, uh, that there was an overage in an item. I mean, I, I, even, I can see they, and, and she did show it to me. We eat, that one line item may have been over, but our overall budget was not over. And we.
That's correct, and you know, the other thing is, is that although he said there was a discrepancy that they reported, it actually came back as a clean audit.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's.
Well, because it's a very minor one and, and we still follow all the rules, and that's basically what it does. I mean, we can get, all studies can get clean audits and that's a good thing. But of course, at the same time, they can mention discrepancies or items of concern, even though you have a clean audit. So that doesn't mean that you don't, okay, just so you know.
Okay.
We used to want the minor discrepancy to become a major discrepancy.
Exactly, sure, exactly.
And a mouthful of pass.
Right, when, I, I, I'm hoping that, that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, that we work with the accountant to start looking at the individual line items. And, uh, we can go back to, to this, to the, to the township and, and make any budget amendments that need to be made. As long as we don't go over the entire budget, but if there's a line item that goes over, we need to go to them and have them corrected as soon as we can. Okay?
Yep.
So I think we're given thirty days or so after each month at the end of the month, and we can go back and, and, and make this correction and address it. So, right now I'm not aware of anything. Uh, you can take a look at, at this report here. We're getting very close to the end. Very, there's one here. Office expense, we may have to do an adjustment there, Mary.
There were a couple that, uh, Rachel did, uh, point out.
Okay.
Let me, um, go back and I talked about.
Mm-hmm.
She said.
But even overall, when you take a look at our overall budget for, you know, expenditures, we're, we're not even at fifty percent. We're at forty-six point nine percent. Of course, that's gonna change when we do these capital improvements things that we just did, the painting and the, uh, and the road thing out there, that's gonna change very quickly.
That's where I'm looking at our budget quarterly to make our adjustments, so whatever we all, we're telling them we're up to date.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, so let's do that and, uh, and we'll meet with, uh, Manager of the, with, uh, Rachel. Okay. But no, I think this is good. I think overall this is good, even with the, the items that we approved, even though a few of them were a little higher than what we expected. We still are going to, I believe, stay within our budget and we have more than sufficient funds in order to cover those, those expenses. We've just got a few more weeks in this fiscal year. Uh, usually what I would do is I would tell the staff, don't buy anything. No more, we're done. Uh, if you do, tell me, it's gotta be an emergency, it must be a must. Otherwise, we're done. No more, no more major expenditures other than the normal, you know, day-to-day.
Okay, um, Sorry about that. So, um, when I, Rachel on Tuesday, she said that she so we're not. It's three items, um, which would be, um, I believe, uh, nine seventy, nine seventy-one and nine eighty-four. Um, that they were not considering, uh, that they are capitalized. Uh, they're not considering them as repairs or maintenance expenses unless they are major and meant to last for several years. So, um, for an example, she used like if it was a particularly like a new roof or paving the parking lot as a major expense. So, um, the other thing, uh, she said we were way over on the auditing fees. Um, and, and that was part of, you know, the budget issues. Um, Rachel adjusted our budget, she added to salaries, she added to office expenses. And she added to operating expenses. Um, she put in a little bit more for repair and maintenance. Uh, she took, um, most of the fact that they haven't been, uh, paying Amy. So, um, she did add, uh, me as in a line item for pay starting in July, this July. Um, and then December fifth, uh, was the first time that Alan Gamble with the auditors actually reached out to April or, uh, Rachel. So, you know, it wasn't that, it was on our end that it was late. Uh, it was more, and, and she had told me before that when she would be contacted, she would return whatever information they needed, at least within a week. So, it wasn't, uh, on our end. Uh, so that's what we had talked about, was reaching out in July to the auditors, so we don't run into any issues with late filing. Uh, she realized it was capitalized items, uh, that caused the auditors to state that we had overspent on our budget. But we didn't.
No.
So.
That, that still doesn't make any sense though. I, I guess I'd have to sit down.
Yeah. But that's all my report, um, other than, uh, all my report, sorry, uh, staffing for the beach, um, I had hired two new staff, um, we are going to meet at the beach, uh, on Friday at noon to, um, talk about, uh, the program for this summer and also to do some cleaning and getting ready. And our Michigan Works people, um, because of the waiver that they were given. Um, generally with Michigan Works, they're supposed to move from one location to another location. Um, completely different locations of, uh, hiring. Um, because Holly is so small, we, our Michigan Works people usually don't have that problem. But, uh, in order for Tom and Brenda to be able to stay with the program, they had to split their time between the beach and the nature center. So, uh, we are going to be working on that. Um, good news though, Tom and Brenda are both recovering well from their health issues. Uh, Brenda's really recovering amazingly well. And then, um, the other thing I would like to say for both the commissioners and for the public, uh, last month, Cheryl and Ever had proposed that they would like to put on a theater camp, uh, here at the nature center. And they have decided not to pursue that this year. Um, Cheryl Lynn is heavily involved in the Holly Dam project. And Lou got caught up in the end of school, uh, challenges with students, so, um, we just wanted to let the public know, uh, and they may be interested in pursuing that next year.
So, I really would like that, yes.
Yeah, so. And, um, as far as our, um, park calendar of events, tomorrow, June twelfth, there will be a teen block party at Crapo Park that we were asked to participate with. And, um, we're going to be bringing our Disc Golf Portable Net and Discs. Um, I'm gonna be going, Jane has volunteered to go, if anybody else would like to come and be present, you're welcome. Um, July fifth and sixth at, uh, Sorensen Park, there will be a Disc Golf Tournament both days. July eighth, ninth and tenth, from nine A M to eleven A M. Uh, Amy Childers with four each will be putting on a children's program. And then currently, uh, we have two beach pavilion reservations, one, uh, June twenty-eighth and one August ninth. And we're wondering if part of the issue for not having more reservations might be because of our phone situation that, uh, was a problem. I did contact, um, Commissioner Wright the other night and, you know, suggested that we might just go ahead and get a new phone number because they are having issues. Verizon says that they have done everything, A T and T says they have done everything. And yet, we continually get calls saying that the park's number has changed and there's no forwarding number, and, uh, we get calls into the nature center. And yet, uh, nobody is able to talk, apparently. Um, it's not like a telemarketer call where you get that click. It's just a straight line blank. And so I, I don't know, but I think, uh, and then, uh, Commissioner Wright did send a note to, uh, an email to Verizon saying that it's time just for us to get a new phone number.
Okay.
Whoever you call Verizon, if you use my old phone, they all know that it's been disconnected.
They'll know.
I understand what you're saying.
You think of the old number.
You gotta make up a number, a new number, right?
Right.
They'll give us one.
Make it the old number.
They'll give us one. I don't think we have a choice.
But our, our old number, and now I'll address it to my comments. Um, the old number has been already forwarded to Brighton. So Brighton actually owns that number. Yeah.
It's, they can't.
Yes, they
Because that's the biggest thing we change, like we can't give anybody, they say, here to keep your old number. We guarantee you your old number.
Not anymore. Anyway, okay.
Very, I'm done with
Very good, very good. Uh, very good, uh, Mary. Excellent report. Any comments or questions for our, our manager? The only, the only comment I have is anybody else? Now tomorrow is that one o'clock?
No, it is
Five o'clock?
Um, five thirty.
Five thirty. Better get that straight.
Five thirty tomorrow at Crapo.
Yeah.
Till what time?
Um, I think it actually starts at six thirty. Um, let me look that up real quick. Yeah, I have four o'clock, but it's not that. Um, I'm sure that the, uh, coordinator had told me five thirty for setup. And she said that, I, I'm sure she said that the teens start lining up at six thirty. So I wouldn't expect the commissioners to be there for a full hour ahead, you know, just for setup. We're, we're not going to have much to set up. It's just going to be this basket that we had at the beach last year and a group of discs. And, um, those were donated to the parks by, um, Dave and Laura Lantin with the Disc Golf.
Do we have instructional? Are we having someone to show teams how, what it's involved and what the game consists of and they can come here and play?
I guess I better look it up before I go tomorrow.
No, there's, there's nothing, you know, I mean, we're, we're not going to have a huge area.
Right. It's close range.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it's Something for them to
We've done it before during the holidays.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe if we had something, um, about Disc Golf that the kids could, could, uh, could take home with them. I, I don't know.
So if they wanted to play Disc Golf, they used to have an app or map. You know, most of our Disc Golf course.
Yeah, I had thought of that, of maybe making up a little flyer, but I kind of rethought it because of the fact that they're going to be busy with activities.
Yeah.
I don't think they're going to want to carry around a
Piece of paper. Yeah. I agree.
Does we have a website for Disc Golf yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
The, uh, the only, the only online presence that Disc Golf has actually, um, the page Sorensen Park Disc Golf Course. It's ran by, um, the Disc Golf.
Dave, probably.
Flint Flyer, that group?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Okay, let's
But I, I will say too that, um, the Disc Golf, uh, there were four members of the Disc Golf Group that attended our guide, guided walk. And also, um, I had given, uh, Sisma's coordinator, Patrick Kenneth, uh, and, uh, Dave let them, uh, have interchange. And, um, I think in the future, in the near future, um, Sisma is actually going to come out and do a walk with the Disc Golf people and point out some of the concerns that they have. And, you know, but I did advise them that they, you know, should not make any changes to the course without including us.
Cause there may be some alterations made.
Yeah.
Yeah, they kind of talked about it during the walk too, remember?
Yeah.
I seen that with some of the Disc Golf people that, that joined us at the tour.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's go around. Uh, Commissioner Earl?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Carl?
I want to talk more about the beach. And, um, I'm, I, I remain saddened by the fact that we're not open. I went by there again today on the, well, on the way home to prepare to come here. And there was a lady standing at the, at the gate entrance, just staring in. And she started complaining to me. And, uh, she's, you know, I pay a lot of taxes and, you know, maybe the water doesn't have to be open, but maybe the gate should be. And I said, we can't do that because of liability. But she said, you know, it's eighty some degrees today and why isn't the beach open? And, and I have to agree.
This is the first time we've had that kind of temperature and it's been raining.
Yeah.
It's been raining.
Well, that, last Thursday, I made the comment that I think it's weather, temperature related. And I just think it's, you know, we, we owe the public something. That's why we're here.
No, I agree.
And to, you know, be, here we are almost mid-June and we aren't open, I think it's a travesty. I think, uh, we need to prepare better, um, on warm days. That beach should be we need to consider that.
I agree. We, we've got some stuff to do and I'm going to make some suggestions during my turn. And I think
Well, I did get the ropes out. Um, for those that haven't seen, I still have to tie off the buoy so they don't float all to one end to the other. Um, I also had to narrow. So if this is the shore, you're kind of looking at a slight trapezoid to not include the lily pads over here and the lily pads over there. Another thing I feel bad about is this beach was founded in the fifties and it's always been a full, complete area. And, you know, and on my watch, here I am reducing the size of it. I feel a little bad. Um, and I thought I sent in items for the agenda a week ago. I don't have my phone, but I thought I addressed the, um, Aqua Weed. I wanted to discuss the proposal to use the, uh, when I was doing the ropes, Aqua Weed was out, uh, doing the water for the residents of Bush Drive to be to the north. And, um, cause I saw this little boat and they were almost on, on the beach property and, and that's what they were doing. They, they, all the residents contribute. And the proposal I had is six hundred dollars to include doing our lily pads. And I think it's a seventy-five dollar, uh, fee that goes in for a license fee. And, uh, I would highly recommend that we do something to eliminate the emergence of these lily pads. Cause no child wants to go near, you know, swimming in weed. Um, and I don't know if it's too late now if I put it on July agenda, but, um, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed at the beach. And, um, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to speak further about the Aqua Weed proposal. I, um, I submitted about six things, five or six.
I apologize because I didn't, uh, I thought I had covered some of the things and then, and then, um,
Why, I, I, I was a little amazed when I saw beach and sign up or something, beach opening, signing. They had about five, six specific things to address. So, so be it. I know the rules. Not on the agenda, doesn't get discussed. So, but, um, look, we are proceeding with paint. Uh, I hope we get the beach promoted. Grass gets pretty high. We did plant seed. Um, I was up there during the hot days watering. Um, there is a large hose right now, uh, in the boys bathroom that will reach from the bathroom all the way to the pavilion. Um, so I've been watering, um, not since we've had the rain, but, um, I'm not sure what tomorrow's weather is, but if I have a, a minute, I'll go out. Is it raining?
Could it rain?
Then I won't consider going out there to water.
I, I will go check.
It is growing. The, the seed is starting to
It's mindful. I know that the next, next few days, they recommend, uh, they suggest there'll be rain, sporadic rain.
Most of the regular notorious forecast in all time stations, because that doesn't work, is, uh, Saginaw and north. That front's coming down, but it's not coming down. We might get a scattered, small storm tonight and then Thursday, Friday and Saturday. But just a chance, slight chance, but most of it's Saginaw north. That's where the lines stop.
And, and one final thing, I thought last week when we met, that we talked about the beach opening and I thought the date mentioned was the eleventh.
We talked, but we didn't really make any decisions or anything like that. We just
Usually it's the first Saturday after school.
And that wasn't discussed either.
It was very brief.
What I remember was the day school was out and I thought eleventh was mentioned. And then we, I later heard that it's really the twelve. Um, but I've never heard anything say usually it's the Saturday after. And again, to me, it's just prolonging for what reason?
Well, we, we have a lot of things to do on the, on, on, at the beach to get it ready too. So we want to make sure that it's, you know, it's ready.
Yeah, that's my point.
Yes. And I think, uh, remember we, well, no, no excuses, uh, we, we get to plan. Maybe we'll do better.
And the biggest thing when you're hiring staff is, let's say you hire three people and say, you three are going to work, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. As per the weather, they might only get two days in there. You know, say, I ain't sitting at home to find out what we're going to do. I'm going to get a job someplace else. Usually after school's out, it's, it finally settles down. Like this week, we had, today was warm. Tomorrow's getting back down into what's normal in the seventies. And then for about a week, then we're going to go back up to eighty for a couple of days and then back down to moderate. So, you know, Michigan is always ever changing, but there's usually a time that you would pretty well figure it's going to be hot.
Yeah, today was, I think was the first time I ever got this hot. It's from the commissioner.
Well, that's ever more in the global warming.
Okay. So, all right, we, we need to do better. But just to be clear, when is the, the beach going to be open? Just to be clear, we decided that we're going to do it this coming Saturday. Is that correct?
I, I was planning it.
Okay. So this Saturday. All right. So it will be open this Saturday. Okay.
Are we announcing it?
We are announcing it. So right now to the public, viewing public out there, and we'll do our best if our, if our, uh, Commissioner Wright can help us put that there on social media that our beach will be open this Saturday.
Twelve noon Saturday.
Twelve noon Saturday. Okay.
What time?
To eight o'clock.
So from twelve to eight PM.
Noon to eight PM.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And there's no charge for the beast, you assume, right? No tags.
We never. Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. There we go. And we will do better soon. Okay. We'll start planning. All right. Moving right along. I'm going to skip me. I'll go last. Uh, Mr. Hutchins, do you have any reports? I'm sorry. Did you have anything else to report? I apologize.
I had a meeting today with, uh, Brian Clausen, head of DP Delia. We discussed, uh, two things. The county came in and they usually agreed and chlorinated area. Well, they came in chlorinated, but they
He saw that.
So Brian's going to try and get his crew out tomorrow, either tomorrow or Monday to, uh, take care of the boss coming in the road. And the other thing we discussed is the brush pile. He's got, waiting for three contractors to bid chippers. They haven't come through yet with their bids. And I asked him, I said, well, in the financial condition of the village, what's up? He goes, well, it depends on what's going to happen. But he goes, I guarantee you one thing. We will address the chip pile. He goes, I'll bring my guys down. Your chipper will take pieces like that big. And he goes, we're going to come down and chip. So whether you get a tub grinder or not, he goes, we're going to chip all the brush that we can chip. The big stuff, we're going to relocate over by the back, out of everybody's way. And that's what he, he told me we're going to do, that they're going to do. So he goes, it will be addressed. One way or another, he would, he's still waiting, nobody, three tub grinders. And nobody's come up. The ones bedrock up out of Flint. They're a big company. I mean, holy mackerel. When the other one is Rod Dennison and the other one is another one that we've always used, the village has used. So that was my talk with Brian today. And he came in yesterday or the day before, got a load of chips. So, and I told him that we're going to start, I'd like to give the commissioner saying, two Saturdays a month from noon till two or three or whatever. We'll take our little, you know, beast up there, their loader tractor. Little chips free. Take all the chips in.
Whoever wants to come around.
Because if you go out there to shovel, try to shovel them chip piles, oh, it's a bummer. It's hard because they're all, you know, packed in and it, it doesn't dig good. So with our tractor, we used to do it. Take tractor back there and line them up. Bang, 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 get them out, get them out, get them out. We got a lot of chips to get rid of.
Do you, um, do you have any kind of regulation as to whether this is strictly for residential use or?
I don't care who comes to us to chips. I don't really care. The village, every winter they do trimming in the town. As you're going up into the cemetery, uh, to the side in the parking lot, they'll have a chip pile that's almost the size of this room. They used to do all the chipping there. And then they quit doing it because nobody came and got chips. They get a couple of, you know, truckloads. So then they had to clean up that mess from the winter and chips all over the place because they float well. And then bring them out here. So I don't care. I don't really care who gets the chips. I mean,
I think there are some rules, um, because it's city property and, uh, I think we should look at that. Okay.
You talk about city property or village or township?
I'm sorry, village property. I keep saying
We gotta make some
I'm so used to saying that word.
Markation here.
Right.
So what about the regulations on township farm?
Yeah, that's the other thing. I, I, I'd just like for us to take a look at that because it's considered, you know, village and township property. I don't have a problem if we were to go outside and, 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 and offer it to others, but, but I think we should offer it first to our residents.
Let's, let's back up to delineation here. Who pays to chip that?
Well, village in this case.
Yeah. So that, whose chips are those?
Well, they have it on our property.
And we own half the chips. And when are we going to start making alliance here? I guess we have checked it out. But are those village or township chips or fifty fifty or what?
Commissioner, I've had many qualms. I have many problems when I saw that pile that has been there for years. And I don't think it's being managed properly. I'm, I'm worried about the chips that are there. I'm worried about the, 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 uh, it's not just trees. It's, it's bushes. It's all kinds of things that are in there. We are not a landfill. And they are supposed to be monitoring that and making sure that they use it for compost. We have no agreement, formal agreement with, with the village. And I think, I think we need to do that.
Well, that's what's going to be our next, our next two projects, if everybody's still here, is Disc Golf, because that's been waiting for two years.
Right.
And we still got to make an agreement with the village.
Yep. We need a contract with Disc Golf. We need to make sure we get something there.
And all that stuff that's out there is compost. That's why they got the gate up is because people used to dump their bathrooms out there, their kitchen cabinets and everything else. And you can't have that when you got a chip pile because you can't chip pressure treated when they're stuck. You can't chip up. You know, drywall, everything else. So there's not too much contamination. I heard a rumor that there's a picnic table out there. I haven't found it yet.
Well, I don't know about that, but I, I, um, they don't close the door like they should, the gate. Uh, we had an incident just a couple of days ago last week where, uh, some young men were out there looking to fish and they went right through, through the gate. Remember that? And we asked them, I'm car going over there. So we decided she and I would go out there and check it out. And it turns out that they were looking for directions to get to the Saginaw River. They thought that that road was open road. So they just went right. And, uh, I think the village needs to do a better job. I, I shut the gate. I personally, I didn't lock it because I, I didn't have the keys and they could open it. But I, I did shut the gate myself.
Because there's two locks that I need. They're locking our lock. It goes lock to lock. Because there's two locks that I need, there were lock and our lock, it goes lock to lock.
Well, anyways, so, uh, but I, I didn't lock it, I just, I just put the, I closed the door. And I did get one of the locks to hold on to the, to the, to the chain. Uh, I, I think we need to come up with an agreement with the village and they need to do a better job because we are not a landfill. And, uh, I, I, it's a mess. And, uh, I was embarrassed as we were taking the walk to show that to the people that, you know, we were walking, what is that pile out there? And it shouldn't grow that big, we should, we should ask them to, to, uh, remove it more often. Or, or as you say, you know, uh, distribute it to anybody who wants it. And then it'll be up to this commission if we wish to, you know, put some boundaries on who gets it, if we decide, no, we need one who wants it, that's fine. Uh, first come, first served, you know, type of thing, uh, but, uh, you know, we need to make some decisions and that's something that we, we need to work on. But glad you spoke with the village because they need to take care of that.
When we get down to the chip piles, we're gonna address them, we're putting the telephone poles up across there. Because they go around the one, uh, bench and drive up and down the hill. So that's my report from, from, uh, Brian Clausen, he's, uh. When we begin to discuss this, he's, he says, if anybody has any questions, call him up at D P W and he's more happy to sit there and talk to any.
Tell him that we're gonna be looking for an agreement.
Yeah, he knows that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been looking for the agreement.
Okay, very good. Alright, thank you, so any questions for the commissioner? None? Okay, uh, next, Mr. Wright?
Yeah, um, this month we made significant progress in the I T department here at the nature center. Um, the mobile phones that we were, um, that we were approved to purchase from Verizon were delivered. Uh, they're waiting, uh, for our parks manager, maintenance supervisor and for our beach staff. Um, sets up rate improves internal communication, enhances public accessibility and aligns with OIA compliance best practice. The iPad that needed for beach concessions has also arrived. Square POS is installed and will be operational as soon as we're ready to, uh, to flip that switch. Uh, the computers arrived, approved last month, have also been delivered and are already fully set up for staff use. At the nature center. Um, as was stated, unfortunately, the nature center phone number continues to experience routing issues. For A T and T customers, Verizon has confirmed the issue lies with the A T and T infrastructure. I have submitted a formal request to Verizon to issue us a new number. As reliable communication is essential and we cannot, no longer afford delays. Um, with the holiday little league update, the spring season for the holiday league is wrapping up. The rookie division championship game actually is taking, actually it should be over. Um, it was taking place this evening on Blackfield, um, bringing it's second close to a very successful season. Um, looking ahead, fall ball season will run from August eleventh through the second week of October. Preparations are underway and registration will become open in the next few weeks. Special thank you to maintenance supervisor Mel Parksill and his assistant Zach for their very hard work this season. Their consistent efforts in mowing and maintaining the ball fields were noticed and appreciated by players, families and organizers alike. Uh, we at the Little League has received numerous compliments on field conditions, thank you for both taking pride in our parks. That's my report.
Question.
Yes.
Are those player badges suitable long enough for, for the team? They look small, you look, they're tilted, do we need to look into correcting that, adding to? And then what about the, the parent leechers?
Right, um, that, those are all excellent, excellent, um, and, uh, issues there. Um, I wish I, I wish I could say I have a plan. Um, however, with, um, a- as our commitment to the parks of Little League is planning. And, uh, we have those ready to be discussed at our next meeting. Um, we, we're planning on taking care of whatever needs to be done along with commission approval. Um, so those are plans are coming together. So as, as soon as we get finalized plans, I'll bring them to the commission so that we can talk about them. So, but yes, those are, those, um, improvements are being heavily discussed, so.
I, I could see it.
Okay, anything else? Anyone, anything else?
I'm good.
If the school has any leftover meat, you should, don't eat it, the living field.
Oh, yeah.
It's a very good idea, um.
Need to see a move of the scrap.
As long as they're, you know, safe and sound, like it's done, done. Okay. Alright, um, so I have, I just have a few items because I know everybody's exhausted, um. I, again, I, I can't thank you enough, all the commission members for all the work that you do. I know that you all have families and, and you still, you, you still give. And I can't thank our, our, our manager enough and our staff, great work, but this coming July first. Is gonna be the first time, it's our, like, our New Year's Day for us, we're going to start a new budget, a new fiscal year. And we've got a lot of things to do, a lot, a lot of things to do, um, gotta work on our creation of our new website. I'm gonna be working on that, I'm gonna be looking at hiring, uh, legal assistants for that, for us. Um, a new auditor perhaps, something that we're gonna do. And then most importantly, I don't know when, and we won't discuss it this evening, but hopefully the next one in July. Is to set up a, a goal session for the commission so that we can come up, um, and very, you know. No later than the end of July, sometime in July, we could have a goal session, I know July is still, you know, summer and you guys have. Plans for your family, so we can work around them, but, uh, but if we could do it in, 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 uh. July, August, we can set up a goal session, I'd be happy to provide burgers. And we can all bring a little bit of potluck and, and have, you know, something to eat for all of us, but, um. Let's do a goal session and, uh, let's come up with a mission statement and then, uh, at least five. No more than ten, uh, goals to give to our staff and to ourselves as to what we want to do this coming year. It's so important that we could do a five-year plan, because some of these goals are just not attainable within one year. So we have to give, when we set up these, these goals, we give some timeframe, some deadlines. And if we need to extend, then we do it, because every year we update those goals to see where we're at. And, uh, you know, I can think of lots of goals that I'd like to see us do. And, uh, but I think it's important so that we, we all know where we're heading. And what direction we're giving to our staff in terms of what do we see for the future. So I think, I think that's gonna be an important session, so start looking at some dates, please, so that we can, um, we can come together. And, uh, and develop some goals and, and objectives and most importantly, a mission statement, so start looking at mission statements. What do you, you know, what should we, what should we be doing? And of course, the, the website, I can hardly wait for our website, yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt, um, would that goal session be coinciding with the, the five-year master plan that we have to?
No, it would be different, but, uh, but no, that's a different plan. And I, I think we should give full attention to that master plan because that's so important, uh, and that's not gonna require a lot of time. Uh, we have to decide how we're gonna do it, uh, are we gonna do it ourselves, are we, you know, but we have to do this. And are we gonna hire somebody to, to work on it, whatever, it's up to the commission. And, but it's, it won't take us that long, but we should get, we should get that done, we should get that done soon. And then, uh, no, that's a good point, sir, and then, like I said, the goal session, that's what all we should be doing that day. Finding out, determining, making some decisions as to where we should be going the next five years, I said one, one to five, but no more than that. Uh, some cities have ten-year goals, things like that, I, I, I like prefer being realistic, something that's more achievable. And so that we can see our progress, see where we're heading. And, uh, and once a year, we revisit them at the same time, around the same time, we can see where we're at, we'll ask the staff. To give us a status report of where are we heading, and then also it helps us to guide us on our budget. You know, where are we, where should we be spending our dollars, not guessing in terms of what projects we should be doing. That is not the way we should be, we should be working, uh, so. Doing things for the beach, doing things for the nature center, you know, it's our parks, uh, uh, the types of programs that we have here. There's so much to do, but, uh, but we need to be realistic, everything, there's a price to it, there's some costs. And we need to take a look at all that, and, uh, so we'll see, maybe one of the goals, or one of the goals would be to. To do something about our finances, to help us increase our dollars, I don't know. Uh, that might be something that we may wanna take a look at, consider for the future. Again, it's just, uh, I'm just throwing it out there, doesn't mean that's what we're gonna do, but I'm just posing it out there for, for your, for your consideration. But I, I would like to have a website done really quickly so that we can, uh, you know, showcase and do a lot of these things that we're doing. And, uh, and, and again, be more, uh, proactive, be more transparent. And be more, uh, communicative with the people out there, because I know they work, they work during the day. And sometimes they need to talk to us, you know, when they can, and through the website, things like that, and, uh, you know, they can do it, plus, so can we. We can give them, you know, all kinds of reports and things like that, let them know about the beach opening. Let them know about the arts in the park or whatever programs we have that we wanna look at and, and do some more promotions, but, uh. But having said that, uh, social media is, is only one of many ways we can communicate. There's so many, so many other ways that we can notify people, have better communications with the school. So that the kids know the programs that we offer, things of that, so much to do. But I'm, I'm excited and, and we, it's a start, okay, and every year we can change those goals. Or we can, uh, add new ones or whatever, so it's not a, just a done deal, but it gives us direction and it gives the staff, okay? So one day, take a look at July, and we'll come up, I will be happy to provide hamburgers or pizza or whatever, not pizza. Yes.
I hope that we can set up a time limit for the meetings, if we're gonna have meetings, I feel like two hours is an appropriate time. For people to have the attention that's deserved, after two hours.
I know time.
Very little studies that are gonna show support a three-year or hour meeting. So I hope that going forward, we can look to a two-hourish meeting and, you know, use whatever means we need to.
We've talked about that, the manager and I, that we'd like to, you know, shorten our meetings, but we keep adding items to the agenda.
Agreed.
And, uh. We have to manage that a little bit better, and then plus, it's not to say that we shouldn't be adding things, but, um. You know, like the dates, you know, that we should have put something on there, because it's, it's due, we have to discuss it. But we need to, that's why amendments to the budgets or to the agenda are, should be very few. We should, once we do the agenda, that should be it, unless there's an emergency of some sort, then we should add it. Uh, and then, you know, if any of us have any items that we want the, the manager to address, you know, we can send that to her. But then leave it up to her to spread out the timeframe, because otherwise we'd be here all night, you know, to, to address.
When I looked on the, uh, township website. You know, it really addressed if the meetings are going over, that perhaps the agenda isn't. You know, isn't the correct for the two-hour timeframe.
They do an extension to.
Or it's possibly that the items that we're trying to tackle are perhaps too big for that meeting. So just, you know, those are the two things that the township website noted for long meetings.
Oh, I agree, I agree, uh, unfortunately for us, we're new. And we're, we had to deal with some issues that had been sitting around for a little while, and I think we finally tackled them. And we're on the right road, I, I think, I really do believe that, you know, we're getting painting, we're fixing our roads. We're looking at the future, we're, we're heading, heading the right direction and it took a little bit of time. And, uh, and most of us, you know, we all started January one, and these were things that had been working, you know, long before that. Our manager just started as well, so we had a lot of catch-up to do. And, uh, but I think we're getting, we've got good, we're, you know, imagine this, we're, we're now on, uh, our meetings are now public, people can see that, we never had that before.
We had it before.
Oh, we did? Oh, what happened then? Why?
Fractor Richter, and then we used to do it after nap time. Yeah, so it's all happened before.
Okay, so we're back again, and, uh, we've updated our computer stuff, our staff now has some decent computer. That they can use, and so does our secretary, I hope. And, uh, and so we're on our way, but it's gonna take a little bit longer, but I agree. That if the meeting should last longer than, than hopefully no longer than ten A M, that we have a roll call vote to say whether or not we wanna continue or nine or whatever. But I do recommend, uh, that sometime in July, that we need to, uh. And I asked the manager to put this on the agenda, is to take a look at our, uh, our rules of, uh, uh, procedure. And to see if we're going to adopt them, so these are the same rules that we're gonna be utilizing the rest of the year. And if anybody wants to make any changes to those rules of procedures, now's the time. So please, that's important, it's at the beginning of our fiscal year. And next year, hopefully we'll do it January one, that's usually when, 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 uh, those things are looked at. But again, because we are behind, we've just started, many of us, uh. Things will change and improve, but I one hundred percent agree with you, we need to keep it, keep it short, and again, there's so many questions, I'm, I'm the kind of. Uh, administrator that I would much rather you ask questions, take the time, and, and believe me, there's many times I wanna say no, but that's not the right thing to do.
Not about not answering questions, uh, don't get me wrong.
No, 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 no.
Never advocate that.
No, I know you don't, I know you don't.
Time limits on each of the items is probably a good place to start.
Um, in some, in some cities, some cities, they, they even say to the, the council, we've got three minutes. You've got, but.
Absolutely.
So these are things that we can look at the rules of procedure, okay, to help us out with that, so that's good, and, uh, and then the last item I had on there was the. Was the brush pile, and I'm thankful for, uh, Commissioner Hutchins to address that, but I do think we need an agreement with them. And, uh, because it's, that, that, that needs to be addressed out there, so thank you for, for that work. Having said that, uh, next item on the agenda, sorry, sir.
One point of information is. When you set an agenda, you gotta go by priorities, what's the most important? And you gotta limit your agendas, we could talk about the mean, moon being blue and orange and everything else. I worked for General Motors for thirty years and we had a lot of meetings, quality meetings, you name it, safety meetings. After an hour and a half. There's nothing there, you can't concentrate, it isn't going through. The other thing that has a sunset on it, that I keep bringing up, is our five-year plan. To go for grants, we have to keep that five-year plan alive, that's our heart. We can't go for grants unless we got five-year plan. Now, uh, being a top village parks, we, to get an outside firm to do our five-year plan. Fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So I said, you look at our five-year plan, you take the document, you go through it and ninety-eight percent of that was boilerplate. It was just stats, population, mean income, whatever else, and what you had in inventory. In your park. So all we, everybody took, there were seven of us, everybody took a piece of it and researched it. We updated and saved all that money in it past, our five-year plan, but there is a sunset on it. And before we start looking at other goals and everything else, hate to repeat, what we, what we, we should be staying the five-year plan. Get them out and go through it and see what we have, because we might be right, we might be copying our thoughts and the five-year plan. So why do it twice?
Well, five-year plan is different than what I'm asking us to do, okay, it's very different, and I'm, that's why I'm saying that they should be separate, okay? The five-year plan deals with, uh, policies and things of that nature. The, the, the goal session would be more like what direction should we be heading? And, and it's not just dealing with this with the five-year plan for parks, uh, it's a little bit more than that. That's why I said, let's separate the two, let's give it, let's give it a, a full attention for the, uh, five-year plan. And let's give another attention to the golden objective.
Well, our five-year plan in the village, if you read that one and the one here for here that we had paid good money for. Gave us our goals and stuff, we wanna do this, we want a basketball net up here, we wanna do this, we wanna do that, that was some of the things that we wanted to get done. So then you go through after so many years, you say, well, we did that, okay? We're not gonna do that, take it out of, so we cleaned that up, and that's what is goal setting is about for the, the park.
It's for the parks, it's for the park projects, the goal sessions that I'm looking at are things more like in terms for operations. Uh, uh, how we're going to, uh. Maybe for the future, if we want, uh, something a little bit different, it's, it is a little different than what you're thinking the five-year plan is. The five-year plan is mostly dealing with our parks, and yes, yes, it could be part of, of, of our goal session. But it is a little different, just a little different, and that you're gonna be going beyond just parks. We could talk about management, we could talk about staff, we can talk about new programs that we want, whatever. But, but, you know, I could be completely out of the, uh, out of the, uh, role, but, but for, when, what I remember doing the five. But but, you know, I could be completely out of the, uh, out of the uh, role, but but for when, what I remember doing the five-year. Park plans, that's what they dealt primarily with parks. I know we're parks uh, commission, I recognize that. Uh, but we haven't really been doing a lot of recreation. And so I think, you know, we need to face that. And uh. So again, I respectfully think that they're they're a little separate and uh. So let's, let's see when this, this new plan needs to get updated by manager. Uh, the the parks and recreation so that we can do it. I, I know that it's expensive to get it done, to get it updated. Uh, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that the information is accurate. And sometimes some of the individuals that are here, we just don't have the time to do, you know, go do goals or go check the stats or whatever. And they're not all, uh, you know. You've gotta do a good plan and you're gonna want people to look at your plan and it has to be accurate and it must be well-written and you must be. Well documented, it has to have exhibits, maps, all that kinda stuff. And uh, but I've, I've seen your maps and.
I'm not talking about township, because that was a professional.
That was a beautiful job.
I'm talking about village.
I I saw the village. I saw the village and it's, you can tell it's, it's done. It wasn't done by a professional, you could tell. But but that's okay. It's okay. It's what we can afford and it's what we can do and that's, there's no problem with doing that. It meets the goals and and please forgive me. I'm not trying to criticize. But I would like, you know, we don't have time here. And so, you know, we need to get somebody who knows what they're doing and knows how to get the information and get it quickly to us. So I think it's, it's funds well spent. We just need to get a good company to get it done. And then in the future, maybe we can update it. Ourself, we have one staff member for crying out loud. It's very difficult to do all of this.
Well, that's what the village parks was. That ten to fifteen thousand is more than half of our budget. So we couldn't afford. To spend that much. So we did it ourselves. It was reviewed by role engineering, different ones who said. There you go. So we were reviewed by professionals. Because all it was was to get the stats up.
Okay.
Could I comment?
Yes.
I think one of the things we lack in doing is research. Focus groups. Why don't we talk to the people of the village, the people of the township? What do you wanna see from us?
That's part of the goals, okay?
Well, how can we set a goal if you don't know what the people?
We, we can say that. One of our goals is to find out what the people want to learn.
Okay, then I'll shut my mouth, but.
It's more than just, it's more than just doing this, okay? So, I don't, no, please.
No, no, I was a little confused.
It is different. We could do a survey.
I'm looking for the difference, so hopefully you're gonna clarify.
I'm hoping, yes.
But, you know, I think that research is important, talking in focus groups.
The biggest thing we had was uh, we had a lot of uh. Things put out there for pretty old, what people want surveys. And I will say one thing about surveys, they don't work. And we're talking even professional. We can't get ten percent of the voters to come to the village in a presidential election. And your surveys, we've had professionals do surveys. And it was, it was embarrassing because, and we've done our own surveys. Everybody's done their own surveys. You go into Holly Days and say. Are you, uh, if you're going to township parks, what would you like to see? You get, if you get five or ten percent. Uh, if you get a hundred.
Okay, can I, this is, this is why it goes round and round. Okay, so I'm gonna stop right there. And uh, so let's talk later some more about this and and keep on track here. You know, again, I wanna give everybody sufficient time, but uh, let's, let's move on.
I just wanna point out, the last two pages in your packet. One was the uh. Letter that was given to the township board today with our budget. Uh, that they're supposed to approve next week. The other thing is, is uh, this was sent to us by mail from the village. This is the uh, notice of June sixteenth and seventeenth. For meetings to conduct for the public hearing, uh, to consider creation of a special assessment district. And on the seventeenth, it will be a meeting to conduct a public hearing to vote on the special assessment. So those are in your packets if you need them.
Definitely, okay. All right, um. With that hearing, no other matters before us, I would like to adjourn this meeting at nine fifteen PM.
Gavel.
I need a gavel. So be it. There we go.